Meeting to order. Let the record show that we have five supervisors present. One supervisor will be late by about an hour, maybe an hour and a half. But he said he will be here. So to my far left, we have Mr. Reggie Underwood from the Reedy Church District. To his right, we have Mr. Jeff Seeley from the Bowling Green District. To his right, we have Vice Chair Mrs. Nancy Long from the Port Royal District. To my immediate right, I have Mr. Floyd Thomas from the Mattapani District. And I am Jeff Black from the Western Caroline District. At this time, if I could get an invocation from Mrs. Long, so if everyone will please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here safely tonight. We ask your protection as people travel home this evening. We also, dear Heavenly Father, ask that you watch over us and that we remember tomorrow, nine eleven, and all those families who are missing loved ones. And be with all our rescue and firefighters and Sheriff's Department, that they might be safe as they protect us. Watch over this council and guide us to wise decisions in your name. Amen.
Please join us for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, opening board comments. I will start with Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we know, the State Fair starts in a few days, twentieth September. They're one of our excellent partners. We're looking forward to having a great State Fair this year. And just heads up, I'll be having constituent meeting in the month of October. I'll give the date at our next meeting and send out notices. And that's all for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Seeley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would first like to commend Shiloh on a phenomenal elected official service that they did on Sunday for all the elected officials in Caroline. I will say that the pastor hit the ball out of the park with a sermon for all of us, and it was greatly appreciated. I also like the last music on the green in Bowling Green is this Friday. It's supposed to be a nice night. I hope everybody come out and enjoy the music, and all the restaurants are open. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mrs. Long.
Well, I will back up what Mr. Seeley said. The service on Sunday was wonderful, and you can tell that we forget sometimes that our pastors definitely are leaders. They carry a lot of burdens, and he knew all the right things to say about being in a leadership position. And we do appreciate their acknowledgement and their time and the wonderful lunch they had afterwards. So thank you very much to Shiloh for doing that for us. And I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just have a few quick ones. Dominion is doing a town hall at the high school, I believe, September nineteenth to talk about their expansion. And I had asked staff, I believe via email, I don't know if that's Mr. Hughes or Mr. Cully, but the maps they sent us electronically are very nice. They're finally clean. However, my eyesight is not what it was, so I asked staff to print out some big ones for us. So if you could print those out and get them to us before the end of the week so we'd have them ready.
If you'd like one, sure.
I'm glad you said that. I would like one. Thank you.
But it's important, we finally got maps without all the vegetation so we could see streets and things. But again, trying to read a map on my computer is not quite as easy as it was twenty, thirty years ago. And I too was at Shiloh, what they called Fellowship with Leadership. It was a great service. And trust me, I do appreciate all the prayers that we get from any and everybody. And last, I'd asked Mr. Cully, and I think he went through the county attorney. There was some question I had about the county providing water to businesses. And just because you've got a rezoning, I believe the legal opinion was the county is not obligated to provide water to a business, but we are obligated to provide water to houses that we've approved. So in that light, I was hoping the board would at least have a brief discussion of possibly requiring special exception for data centers that are not in the pert so we could look at whether we want those or special exception gives us a little more control about doing it. Because I don't think anybody on the board wants to have a few data centers approved and land just sitting there while they wait for water. So if the chair will allow us to add to the agenda just a brief discussion about that and maybe provide some direction to staff so we can work from there.
Thank you.
And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, I actually got a call from Mr. Forehand about a couple hours ago asking that also topic to be added. So we can, when we get to amendments, the agenda will add it. Want to just say a couple things. I just ask for the public's prayers for the Robinson family. Mr. Robinson's a employee in our, what is the department I'm looking for? The building, building department. And his family has gone through, is going through a really rough time right now. So we do ask for prayers for the family. Donna is an excellent, excellent employee and has been for a very, very long time. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Want to reiterate everything that the others said. The State Fair, State Fair is a really, really coming up here at the end of the month. State Fair has been a great partner of Caroline Counties for quite some time, so please get out there. They put on a heck of a fair every year. So please get out there. And finally, from me, tomorrow is nine eleven, and I think every American remembers where they were when nine eleven. I don't think there's an American out there that's, you know, was old enough at the time. Everyone remembers, it's just one of those events, everyone remembers where they were. And for me, one of the things that's, was kind of amazing to me is you looked at that timeframe for a couple of years after, there was this really solid unity in the United States, you know, as far as the country really was united and came together against a common enemy and made you realize how precious life is. And I think we've gotten away from that a little bit here. So when we argue about things, please understand that we're all, we are all one people. So that's my comments, and we can go on to amendments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we amend the agenda to include a brief discussion of data centers and water requirements and making that a special exception.
Okay. Let's make that, let's make that, let's make that under, on new business, we'll have to go down to, we'll make that number sixteen B, sixteen B. Oh yeah, well, that's a good point. So can I get a, is that a motion?
I'll make a second.
Yeah, I said need a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we are.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for two other amendments, please?
Sure.
The first is actually to remove an item, what is number, item number fifteen under new business related to the utility changes. We've discovered we're not, we're not ready for that yet. Need to do a little bit more work on it, so we would ask that you remove that from the agenda for tonight. The other issue is, I put before you a resolution declaring the week of September ninth through thirteenth as National Disability Voter Registration Week in Caroline County. That is a request that came in during Mr. Cully's absence, and frankly, I missed it. But they're having an event on September twenty first, a fall festival event, and would like to have the resolution. It appears to be pretty straightforward to me. So would ask that the board would consider adding it to consent as item three G. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so can I get?
Mr. President, I'm going to make that motion. This is, the week of September ninth is Disability Voter Registration Week?
Yes, sir.
That's what they want to call it. Disability Voter Registration.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to remove agenda item number fifteen and add agenda item three G under consent.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we are now to presentations and reports. Our first presentation is Caroline County Fire Rescue Members with twenty and twenty-five years of service. Chief Lachus?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Back in 2016, at your direction, we developed a policy to recognize years of service by our career and our volunteer providers in our system. And today, we would like to recognize those with twenty and twenty-five years of service that have recently come up. I'll read the names. Not everybody could be here. We do have two recipients here, and I would ask that you present those awards to people that represent either in your district or as chairman for the career side. So our first one with twenty years of service is Captain Ed Bonham. Second, with twenty years of service is Kathy Fulon from Port Royal District. She was unable to be here. Third is Mike Griffin with twenty-five years of service in the Port Royal District, I'm sorry, in the Frog Level District. Sorry about that, Mike. And Robbie Munich with twenty years of service in the Ladysmith District. If you guys would come up, and we'll go up to the board, and if each board member would make the presentation to that individual, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, but he's career, so. Yeah. 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 Next up, we have an update from Shrieka Twiner in regards to the Caroline County YMCA. Shrieka is the executive director.
I know, it has been a while. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. Thank you so much for having me this evening. It has been a while since I've been here, as Ms. Carson stated. Kind of been tight to the facility, working on staffing and keeping things going that we need to do over at the YMCA. But just wanted to update you with some of the wonderful things that we have been doing. We've been able to strengthen our partnership with Caroline County Public Schools. This year was the first year that we were able to bring back our second grade Learn to Swim program, where we work with second graders and provide them with six weeks of life-saving water safety skills. So we are looking this year to be able to launch that back in all three schools. Last year, we were able to do two. So we are looking for volunteers to help us with that program. We've also strengthened our partnership with the middle school, recognizing the need for that age group to get involved. So we've been able, over the past couple of years, to launch the middle school swim team, as well as through a grant with REC, work with them to provide free babysitting skills, recognizing that we have several children that take care of siblings in the county. So we've also been able to train several individuals, youth in the county, to get them lifeguard certified, to work at local pools, as well as the YMCA pool, and also recognizing with the number of bodies of water we have in the county, having children that are older that are able to rescue people and save lives is very important. We've also partnered with CCPS, providing a reward, if you will, for Lotus students. They're able to come to the YMCA every Friday during the school year, as well as receive free memberships over the summer, recognizing that some of these children need a safe place to be. So we work with Lotus, as well as we offer that benefit to Keys Academy as well, which is also in Caroline County. We are also working to increase our staffing to recognize the need for community health programs in Caroline County, specifically as it pertains to hypertension. If you all look at the numbers in our planning districts, you'll recognize that Caroline's numbers are substantially higher than surrounding counties. So we're looking to get back into the community and educate people on the importance of hypertension, as well as CPR, first aid, specifically hands-only CPR. So we've also strengthened our partnership with the Red Cross to provide those services. So I encourage you, if you all have any needs in your district to reach out, we'll be happy to come to you and provide these services to your constituents. And we're also working with the Red Cross to bring awareness to the importance of blood donation, not only just blood donation, but specifically as it relates to sicko cell anemia. There's quite a few interesting studies as it pertains to African Americans donating blood and identifying ourselves. It directly impacts lives that are affected by sicko cell. So that's another part of our community health initial. We're also looking for partners in mental health, recognizing the need for our students and adults in our county. So we're looking for people to partner with us to bring awareness and just go away from the stigma that surrounds mental health, specifically suicide prevention in our young people. We have been fortunate enough to be awarded a grant. It's a Bridge Builder Grant, and basically, that will train several of our staff to be able to go into communities and work with organizations to have some of the difficult conversations that surround our communities, whether it pertains to race, gender, politics, racial issues, all of those things. So we are working to get certified. I think so many times, we all have good intentions, but it's just never really, we're not trained and we're not able to follow through. So we're happy to receive that grant to be able to do that. We're also happy to say that we are continuing to provide financial assistance to constituents of Caroline County as it pertains to membership, before and after-school care, swim lessons, and all kinds of services that the YMCA provide, so that no one is turned away. We've also done our Bright Beginnings Program again, which some of you have participated as volunteers in, so I thank you for that. But we were able to serve fifty students this year, as well as fifty-five students last year. So that program is back into full swing. And really, we're just continuing to hope that people reach out to us, specifically you all, to let us know what your constituents need and invite us to your constituent meetings so that we can talk to them and hear what the community needs and to be able to better provide those services. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a discussion of our balance, fund balance policies and borrowing capacity from Mr. Rogers from Davenport. And... Mr. Rogers, if you'll forgive me, I do not know the name of your...
Davenport Company?
Yes.
Stephen's going to hand you out the books here. We were just talking about dates, so just want to give me one second, Mr. Chairman. Just trying to get a couple of dates in my head for a little bit later in the presentation here. Good evening, great to see you all again. It's been a little bit, but been a while, I know. We were asked to come, and on page one there, basically, what we're going to talk about is the credit rating, kind of where you are, kind of reminder of where your rating is. We're going to talk about your key financial policies, the best practices. We actually have maybe an additional recommendation and change. Then we also want to show you how you stack up versus other similarly rated counties here in Virginia, especially as it pertains to fund balance, as well as your debt ratios. We're going to talk about your debt profile. We're going to talk about the way we go about doing financings, the options that we have here in the state, and then talk about possible debt-funded projects that you have in your budget. So on page, I guess I got the flipper here, Donna. So page two, currently, we're rated AA two by Moody's and AA by Standard and Poor's. That is in the very strong category. I think that's, you know, when we got that rating, I think I was very pleased that we got the middle of the category. I think, big picture, I don't think this is a ceiling for us, but at the moment, it probably is. And what I mean by that is, one of the things that is probably holding us back from going a little bit further up is going to be size of the county, which is going to continue to grow, but also the debt we have on the utility system. As we all know, that because of the size of our system, it's not currently self-supporting, meaning the revenues from the system aren't enough to cover both operations as well as capital. We end up having to use money out of the general fund, and that's just going to be, it is what it is. It's because of size. We work with several other entities around the state who are in the same boat. But there will become a day, I can remember years ago, when I first started working Spotsylvania, some twenty-five, thirty years ago, they had just come out of that same situation where you are now, and now it became self-supporting. So it'll happen, it's just a matter of time. So the challenges and strengths that Moody's saw, and again, the last time we actually talked to them was April of twenty-one. They talked about a moderately sized tax base experiencing growth as a strength, as well as your healthy reserve and liquidity position. And then on the challenge side, again, as we just talked about, it's the higher debt burden. And what they mean by that is the combination of both the general fund, school-related debt, as well as utilities. And that's relative to, basically, what they're saying is other double As, AA twos in their case, nationwide. So some of the things they talked about that could lead to an upgrade, substantial tax base expansion, improvement in income levels, significant growth of reserves and liquidity, moderation of debt burden. In terms of downgrade, the things we want to watch out for are a trend of operating deficits and narrowing reserve levels. And what they mean by that is deficits, meaning that your revenues are not enough to cover your operating expenditures, and then your reserves are continuing to come down because you've had to use reserves to actually make ends meet. Material tax base concentration or decline in residential income levels, substantial increase in debt and pension burden. On the S and P side, they look at things a little bit differently. They give you, basically, on a scale from one to five, with five being very strong and very weak being the one side. Essentially, you'll see out of the seven categories here, we were strong or very strong in all but a couple, adequate on budgetary performance, and very weak on debt and contingent liability. And again, similar to what we saw on the Moody's side, they're basically saying, hey, your debt levels are a little high for your, for this rating. So why are our financial policies important? Particularly, the ratings agencies like to see these in place. They give us, I'll call it bonus points. They don't necessarily ding you if you don't have them, but you're going to, but it gave us bonus points, if you will, to help us get into those AA, middle AA categories when we went through the rating process. But it also gives a guide for not only you, the sitting board, but also boards in the future, guides them in terms of both fund balance as well as debt levels. So first, we'll talk about the unassigned fund balance policy. Essentially, at the moment, it is maintaining that fund balance at the end of the year greater than twelve, equal or greater to twelve percent with a target of fifteen. And basically, that's total operating revenues, general fund plus school operating fund revenues, less the transfer out over to schools. So essentially, it's your school and county operating budgets, the percentage of those revenues. So the second bullet just talks about when you could use it. And a third bullet is something we added that you might remember, and this is something the agencies really like to see, and that is if, you know, it's really raining, you had to use fund balance to meet, you know, if revenues in the middle of the year really took a dive and we had to use it, if it fell below twelve percent, that you would come up with a plan over a three-year period to get it back up to at least that minimum twelve percent. They really like seeing that. The policy right now, we still think it's very strong, not recommending any changes to those numbers, the twelve or the fifteen percent. As you, as we just talked about, both Moody's and S and P consider the liquidity levels very strong back in twenty-one, and so we want to keep that. Couple of thoughts, though, is that one of the things we've seen, not only for you all, but also in other localities, and that is, fund balance levels have grown above, way above, in some cases, your policy levels. And so there's a question of, okay, at what point are we going to use that? So a couple of thoughts, one being putting a, what we call a budget stabilization reserve in place, somewhere in the neighborhood of two to five percent. And essentially, it would be the first line of defense, if you will. It would be the first thing that you would use in the event of one-time emergencies, unanticipated expenditures that came in, or just to smooth or offset some revenue fluctuations that might happen in the middle of a fiscal year. So that would put you, let's just say for the moment, we use the top end and said, okay, let's say we've got fifteen at the top end of the unassigned policy and another five percent for the stabilization. That would put you at twenty percent. So then you say, further and above that, and a number that we're suggesting is twenty-five percent, anything above twenty-five percent would basically be siphoned off and put over into your reserve for capital or toward a capital project. And I'm going to give you, go ahead and flip to the next slide here on page eight, and show you where you are right now. For instance, looking at the chart for ending of 2023, you were at twenty-eight percent. So if you think about that, if you were at twenty percent, that would be the fifteen percent plus the five for stabilization. And then if you said anything above twenty-five, which would be basically three-point-two percent, seeing our total operating revenues at right about a hundred million, you know, that's basically three million dollars that you could pull from that ninety-seven million, or from the twenty-seven million, sorry, twenty-seven-point-six, and put it over into your capital fund and use it for one-time projects. So that way, you're not getting chastised from someone saying, hey, where are you, your fund balance keeps going up, at what point are you going to cut it off and not, and use it? Use it for some one-time uses, because that's what their agencies want us to see. The last thing you want to do is put it in your operating budget, because then, guess what? The next year, you got to find revenues to basically replace that in the next year's budget. To give you a sense of how you stand versus others, this is a chart of AA one and AA two Virginia counties. You can see on the graphic, you're in green at the top. The gold are the AA ones, and the blue are the AA twos. So you're right there at the very top of the AA twos. You and French George are right there, you know, a lot higher than anyone else. Now, remember, we have a very high debt level, which this is one of the things that helps kind of offset that very high debt level. So it's a good thing that we're up there. And then you'll see up there in the gold, you've got a couple of folks who are above you, but then there's a couple of folks that are below you as well on a percentage basis. So moving to the debt side, just as a reminder, we have two major debt policies. The first one is measuring outstanding debt divided by the assessed value of the county. That includes real and personal property. So that number is the outstanding debt, the existing policy shall not exceed three percent of the total. And our recommendation is basically increasing that to four percent, just to give ourselves the additional of the utility debt. So essentially, we would go to four percent after we add in the utility debt in there. That gives us a little bit more room. And I'll show you what that looks like in a little bit. The other one that we look at is debt service as a percentage of total operating revenues. Think of that as the annual debt service you're spending as a percentage of your budget. It's a way to think about it. And currently, our policy is twelve percent, not exceeding fifteen percent. So we want to basically not be above twelve percent, and we're in good shape now, as you'll see in just a moment. One of the things that we want to underscore there is that it, that the utility fund debt service is considered tax-supporting as long as it is receiving that general fund debt. long as it is receiving that general fund support, just as we've talked about. We really need to see about three years of it standing on its own. And like I said, that's probably a little ways off before we get there. Our existing debt profile, so as of basically June 30 of '24, so fiscal year '25 and beyond here, we're at 61.895 million in terms of general fund and schools. You'll see it's about $9 million a year over the next couple of years, and then it does start dropping off. It's going to drop to about $8 million in '27 and a little bit further. So we do have some capacity down the road to take on some more debt on the side if we need it. On the utility fund, you'll see it declines over time, but not as, there's not really big drops, if you will, like you saw on the previous graphic. We're at 3.7 million, and it drops a little bit each year. And then Dawn has only got three more years, believe it or not. So that'll be going away here in just a little bit. So going back to our debt policies graphically, you can see, we use that 4% that gives us a little bit more headroom, because we know we have some utility debt down the road. That would give us room to take that on. You can see the dark green is the existing general government and schools debt. The light green is the existing utility fund debt. When we do it as a comparison, you can see we're currently only at 2.4%. There are a couple of folks who are out there with us, such as King George. They've got a very similar situation where they have utility debt that's not supporting itself, so it's up there. You've got Hollow White that's out there as well. The other graphic, debt service as a percentage of revenues, you can see we're well below the 15% at the moment. We do have a little bit of space. But again, we know that we have some potential utility debt down the road that we're going to be taking on. When we do, again, that comparison, debt service as a percentage of revenues, again, you can see there's a couple of folks who are out there, but in this group, we are out there by ourselves, which again underscores why it's important to have that strong fund balance policy. So from a capital standing, capital planning standpoint, we understand that for the '25 adopted budget, you've got some projects here listed on the page that total almost $8 million. There's about $2 million of general projects. You can see about 1.3 million on utilities and 4.5 million on schools. We understand you're going to be taking out some other potential projects in a couple of weeks at your next meeting. So that's something, that's what we were just talking about in terms of dates. So just keep that in mind for the moment. We understand you might have some others that you might want to add to this as we go through the evening here. Just as a reminder, some of the things that we think about in terms of, how are we going to go about borrowing the money? There's a lot of different things that impact it. Part of it is our rating. Part of it is, what is the security? How big is it? How long are we amortizing the debt over? What are the provisions in terms of being able to redeem them and timing? And so there's a lot of different things that go into that. Our options really are threefold. We have direct bank loans through an RFP. We have a public market issuance where we basically go and get a bond rating and sell it to the public in a bond issue. That's where we have the plumber official statement and go out and get an updated rating from the rating agencies. And then the other one is going through VRA. You know, they've, they've basically told us that we have a lot of utility debt, but they have been open to doing general fund-type debt. But we've missed that deadline. They are already, basically about halfway down the road for their fall issuance. So really, our two options to get this done this fall are the first two, either a direct bank loan versus an RFP or the public market issuance. In terms of where interest rates are now, in a 20-year range, we're looking at probably around 3.6% in terms of 20-year debt for a, for a strong AA like yourself. And so that's kind of where we're seeing rates, and I'll call it a 3.5% to 4% range. We are seeing some of the bank rates being a little bit higher, but their costs, the cost of us going through that process a little bit lower. So we're, we're taking that into account in terms of all-in costs in terms of that borrowing. What we should be in, again, around that 4% level with, even with a bank rate, that'll cost us a lot less to go through that process, and it's a little quicker. We were talking a little bit about the yield curve a little bit earlier before the meeting, and it's interesting. One of the things that I've noted, we did a bond sale about three or four weeks ago, where the first three or four years were higher than the middle four, five, six years, and then it came back up in years seven, eight, nine. We're now seeing that, that dark blue-green line, or dark green line, excuse me, that dark green line is the yield curve. And what you'll see is that it's really starting to go back to a normal upward slope. You know, you keep hearing in the news, the Fed's going to lower rates. Well, the rate they're going to lower is really the one-year rate. And we're going to see that one and two and three-year rates start coming down when they do that. Generally, it affects the first five or six years of our yield curve, but it doesn't affect the back end. The back end of the yield curve, I'll say seven years now, is really dependent upon what's going on in the general economy. If there's a recession coming on and the market feels like that's about to happen, then you're going to see that whole yield curve shift down. If things are going great, market feeling really good, GDP's growing, then you're going to see that yield curve go up. And so that's all going to be dependent upon general market conditions. The market has basically baked in already at least a 25% decrease in the overnight rates that affect your savings rates in particular, coming up here in a couple of weeks, or actually, it's next week, I guess, starting to sneak up on us. So that's really baked in. There's a chance it could go 50 basis points, but the market really already has that 25 basis point built into it. So as you see, we're going to show you some charts here. We've estimated, we've added a quarter basis point just for conservatism in here. We assume closing in, in October. And so what you're going to see is, with the 8 million if so of borrowing between the general government and the schools there, you can see that's about 6.7 million for those projects, non-utility projects. It's going to cost, because we've amortized some of those, which are, their average lives are a lot shorter upfront, you'll see it about $800,000 a year, after we've wrapped it around some of the existing debt so that we don't see a peak. And then it goes to about, almost $400,000 a year after that. The utility, or I'm sorry, so when we added into the existing debt, which is what we've done here, the first column being existing debt, then our projected general government, projected school from the previous page, and then our total projected. Right now, you've got about 9.1 million in your budget. So we're going to need a little bit additional dollars there to the tune of about 200,000, and that will take care of basically the first couple of years. This is what the graphic will look like, so not adding too much. But again, just to go back and note that we didn't put a lot in '25 and '26 because we didn't want it to exacerbate the debt. So we, we did push some of the principal off into '27, '28 and beyond. So from the utility side, generally for utilities, as you know, we, if the, or if the project itself lends itself to be over a longer period, we generally will borrow at 30 years. And so while, one of the things that we may note, when we bring you back some results, and we're thinking at this point of doing this as a bank placement, because we can get it done a lot sooner, they may not give us a 30-year rate. They may not give us a 20-year fixed rate. Generally, they, we're seeing maybe a 10-year fixed rate where we basically reset it. We've done some of those in the past with you all. We might get a 15-year rate and be able to reset it again about 15 years later. So that's something that we may see, but they will let us amortize it over 30 years, and that's what we're thinking here on the utility portion. So this is essentially what we're looking at as a projected five-year term on portion of it, because it's a shorter amortization. And then, and then 10-year with the bullet on there, again, we would refinance that at a later time when we're doing some other issuances. And this is what it would look like, assuming we amortize it out. That's what the blue box is, so that our debt service would be about 3.7 for the first couple of years, and then it drops back down to where we are now at about 3.7 or 696 there. So we're going to need about $50,000 over the next three years just to take care of this additional debt service. So not too big of a number in order to take on this additional debt. And then this is what the projected amortization would look like. So once we add the utilities on top of the schools and general government debt, see we're still in good shape, and still in good shape again on the debt service to expand to a revenue, excuse me. You might ask, kind of, you know, hey, what is our, our capacity? You know, how much more can we borrow? And using that 15% debt service to revenue cap there, assuming a 20-year level debt service borrowing, and we use 5% as our interest rate and a growth of 1% annually on the, on the budget of revenues, you can see that you still have plenty of room. Obviously have to figure out how to pay it back, but you do have the debt capacity under the two ratios to borrow up to 100 million over, over the next five years. And we know that's important because we do have some, some sizable utility projects out there. So to, the takeaway for tonight basically is that you are in solid financial position. You continue to stay that way. We know you've used a little bit of fund balance, but for some one-time investments, but you're still very strong at 28% of operating revenues. If you want to consider our, our suggestion on the policy changes, then you could actually take some of that and put it toward capital. Your debt burden remains manageable, and adding, you know, what we have a little bit here is not going to hurt. And at one day, we hope all this utility debt will be self-supporting, but for the moment, we are including it in the revenue and, that debt service to revenue and the debts to assessed value calculations, to make sure that we keep ourselves in good stead with the rating agencies. So we are recommending going forward the bank RFP, and this goes back to the date that I was talking with staff just a moment ago on. So we were going to get an RFP out with your okay. Have it come back to you? We were planning on coming back to you on your October 8 meeting. But, but knowing that you're going to have a discussion about some additional projects you may want to add in there, we want to wait and see what you're thinking there. Once we hear back whether we want to add those into our, our RFP out for banks, we could get it out after the September 24th meeting. I think that's your next meeting. And then we could basically go and bring it back to you at your November meeting, which I understand is the 14th, if that is[1318.26] meeting, which I understand is the 14th, if that is something that works for you all.
Thank you. Does the, does the board have any questions, Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Again, as always, great, great presentation. Good to see you. I don't know if you know this, but maybe I should ask staff first. When is the high school Madison project come off debt service? Is it 10 more years to go or less?
I think it's about 10. It may be nine, but it's, it's in that 10-year, nine, nine-year, nine-year range.
So that's like six cents off the tax rate we'll have in 10 years that we could apply. Okay. Cause that's a big thing.
Eight. It was eight cents.
It was eight at the time, but it won't be at that. It won't be.
Yeah, I'm telling what that is now.
Yeah, it'll be less, but yeah, okay.
You should see that fall.
Okay. Did you have that?
There's the debt service graphic. I don't know where school, where, where the school is in that, but you can see 34 to 35. There's substantial drop in debt service.
So it's about 10, 11 years. All right.
So it's about 3.6 million of debt drop right there.
Okay, that's a good point. And the other, the other question I had is when you were making your presentation, Mr. Rogers, when you were making your presentation, you combined the county and the school budget and you said it was $100 million.
97 million. Yes, sir.
I thought the school budget was close to 60 or 70. Are you just, are you counting everything for the school budget?
I'm going to look to my analysts and see.
Maybe you got it. At schools and see the county budget, you got to subtract out what we give to schools. So the county budget, the general fund budget goes down under, if you look at the general fund budget at 58 or whatever, 55 million, everything we transfer to schools, you can't count. So then you count the whole school budget and the county budget minus what we give to the school.
But ours is 60, so minus 15, we'd be at 45 and there's a 70. So that's 115, which is a lot more than 100.
Only school operating. This is not the special revenue.
It doesn't include, I guess, the lunch program and all the other.
All the funds, only the, only the instruction.
Only operational. Yeah. We don't, we don't do the cafeteria funds and things like that.
Or special, the special funds that they get from the.
I mean, cause those numbers added in would make the percentages a lot different. That's why I wanted to honenon on why you were doing.
Yeah. And this is what we do across the state is we don't include capital cafeteria funds for any of anybody. So this is apples to apples, the way the agencies would see it.
Do you have any that are just county?
Are just?
Just county without schools.
Oh, you mean the?
The budget numbers you just gave us are county and schools.
Oh, oh, you're seeing, does anybody do a policy just?
Do you have just a county number that says the county has 60 million in budget and 15% of 60 million is?
So what we typically see are giving, I think, if I'm understanding your question, I'll give you an example. Down in Georgia, where school districts are separate and have their own tax rate, but there the counties, usually their fund balance policy is 25%. They use a much higher percentage because their numbers are smaller.
Because their numbers are low.
Yeah.
All right. Now that's kind of what I wanted to compare.
If that's what you're asking.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that's all I have.
Yep.
Mr. Underwood?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The, you said that the Dawn wastewater comes off in three years.
Yes, sir. Three years.
It was 156, I believe. Can you slide back up for me?
170. Call it 170.
Okay.
And that's transferred from the general. Yeah. And that's, that comes straight from the general fund, as I remember.
Right.
Confirmed.
My second, my next question is, so debt service really is kind of the factor that the amount of debt you're carrying really is the indicator or variable more so of how well you're doing?
In, in our case, it's, it's what keeps us from getting to be higher.
High, right.
Yes, yes.
So I guess my question is, so if we were able to pay down our debt service, we should, we find a way to do that. Should we continue to pay down our debt service or should we?
So, so one of the things.
Take on different additional projects, I guess.
So one of the things, that's a tough one because you, you want to keep making investments.
I understand.
Right? There's that balance. The one.
But what, what determines that? And that's what I'm trying to get to. What determines that balance of where you're spending?
Right.
In terms of capital improvement, but yet you're also taking away some of the debt to ensure that that there is a balance so that you don't get too heavy on one end or the other end.
Part of these ratios. So the fact that we are underneath the ratios we've, we've talked about, because, you know, they're, they're both headed down.
Right.
And this one in particular, because it's the annual payment versus your budget with that big drop that we see in about 10 years, gives you more capacity to do something else. And it's one of the reasons why we don't, we went through this, I mean, may not remember, but maybe even at the staff level, we talked about, do we borrow for these schools at 25 years or 30 years to make our payments lower, but stretch it out longer? The problem with that is that I have is that in 10 or 15 years, you're replacing a roof or an HVAC or something else, and then you got to borrow for that. And so it just lumps debt on debt, which is why I like that we did 20 years, which just falls off because guess what? There's going to be another school that's going to have a need somewhere out there if you don't already have it.
Prior to that.
Yeah, if you don't already have it. Because, yeah, it, it, right. And, and that's the thing. And so the good thing here is, go back to the actual graphic number, you know, we're at 9.2 million. You have dedicated in your budget 9.2 million right now.
Right.
In two years, you have an extra million dollars that you can put toward another project that might be out there, that might have a need without affecting your current operational budget.
Right. That's what.
And so I hope that's answering your question. Is that, that's the way we like to look at it. It's why we don't put too much upfront or too much at the back end because it gives us room to add more as you go along. Because as time goes on, we end up with more projects that need fixing or updating.
And I had a question about page 19. If you go back to 19, I wrote page 19 for some reason. Oh, yeah. So, so you're saying here that based on our, our other peers in the, in the Commonwealth, our debt service percentage is higher than?
Higher than most. That's right.
So we need to try to bring that down again to be within.
Well, it, right. And that was a comment I made.
Or increase the fund balance, yeah.
The fund balance helps, helps balance.
Balance that, right.
I'll use Montgomery as an example. Where Montgomery have for, for as long as I've worked with you guys, they're at 10%. And I know where all that debt service is. They don't have utility funds because they have a separate authority. It doesn't. That's all schools. That's two, high, there's like three new high schools in the, in the last probably 10 years I've worked with them. And so that is expensive, but they know that. And so what they're doing now is kind of holding the line on until they, until their dropdown happens before they issue any more debt. But they also have very strong fund balance to help offset that.
So, and that's what I guess what I'm trying to get to. So it would behoove us then to continue to grow that fund balance while we're decreasing debt so that we can do those capital projects and not have a major effect upon the.
We're okay with the percentage of your fund balance.
Right.
Being at that 15% level. That's a good, strong number. Now, it means you have to put aside a little bit more each year as your budget grows, right? As revenues come in higher or as your budget grows higher, you end up having to put a few more dollars in. But if you can keep to that 15%, and if you want to put a little bit as a budget stabilization aside, as we were just talking about, the, anything above that 25%, use it to pay, pay for some of these projects.
Right.
And not borrow as much.
Right.
So, so for, you did that for the fire station. I forgot about that. Right. You used cash for the fire station. So we didn't have to borrow for it. That's one less thing that we end up having to add to. So yeah, there's that balance. And so that's part of what we're, that's part of what we're introducing tonight is to, is to have a policy that says above 25%, because we're comfortable at 15 with a budget stabilization in there, but above 25, and it, it gives you that cushion between 15 and 25. Above 25, set it aside or use it.
But we borrowed some money for the fire station. We, we set aside that 1.5, I believe.
We, yes, we did. We borrowed money for the fire station and inflation ate it all up. And so we borrowed for two and spent what we borrowed for two on Carmel.
On Carmel Church, right.
And so instead of borrowing more money for Sparta, I think we were able to.
3 million.
We put, we put 3 million into that project. It could borrow some. So, I mean, it, it, it definitely saved our, saved from having to borrow the full amount for Sparta.
So I'm saying, Mr. Underwood, can I ask one more? You wait. Yes. Mr. Rogers, I, I forgot to ask you, of the 10.7% that's our total debt service, how much of that is for schools? Do we know?
I don't know if I know. See, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. Sorry.
All right. Can you find that out for us?
Yeah, we'll see if we can. Stevens, if you can dig it up and.
Let's run it where you all sit. No, he, they, his question. They don't have the numbers.
He can pull up the debt file.
They don't have the numbers for us. Mr. Sealy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got a couple of questions. Page 28. And just to be clear, so our debt service in, and I don't, so it's 76,000 in 25, it goes up, but it goes up an additional 136 then in 26.
This is the new borrowing. So the first column is existing debt. So your budget this year is 9,183, and then it drops down a little bit, but we're adding, we did interest only in 25, and then we add a little bit more, but not fully amortized in year two. You'll see it goes 52,000 for schools up to 192, and then fully amortized at 355. Same thing for, we, what we, if we did, if we went immediately to the 450 and the 355, we'd end up with spikes and you'd have to come out of pocket even more. We were just trying to shave off the top a little bit.
But we're still, we're still going to stay in that 9 million range total debt service.
That's that, yes, sir. That is correct.
And we drop a little bit in 27.
See, yes, this is, this is assuming that our borrowing comes in at our, our market plus 25. We go 9,3, 9,3, and then it drops to 8.9.
I'm just, just to be clear, there, we don't have this big gap because you have to come all the way to the right to see where we're really at debt service.
Yeah, this is existing right now, and this is the total of existing general fund schools. So it'd go 9,3, 9,3, 8, 9, 8, 0.
Cause that takes me to our next question on page 36, and I, I just about fell out of my chair. Our 10 million total we could borrow is 193 million. I'm sorry.
But that's over 10 years. So, so let me explain that maybe a little bit better here. So in year one, you could do 65. It would take, in two years, we could do another seven, then another 15. And the reason that it keeps going up a little bit is you're, is you're paying some debt down. Your revenues are growing by 1% per year, but it's that debt drop is where you can add another 15 and another 13.
So there's no, no place where we've got this, I guess.
Not one, not all at one time.
Right. And that's the problem is we can't just take on some big number at any point, even though.
We'd have a spike if we did.
We, we might have to, to do things and we're going to have to figure that out. But in the interim, I mean, till 28.
Yeah.
We'd have to cumulatively keep our debt, but we'd have to keep borrowing low to be able to get us to any place.
Let, let me explain this maybe a little bit better. That 65 million is essentially this, this gap right here going all the way up to the goal line. So we immediately would get that 65. But then what happens is the additional, the additional 7 million, for instance, in year two, is really when it starts dropping down, is, is really that little bit here. And then there's the 15.
So that's, that's what it would drop each.
Right. So you, so you got two things going on. One, you're paying debt down, your debt service is going down, and two, your revenues are going.
But you're right. We'd have to come up with a revenue source for.
You still got to pay for it.
We got to pay for it.
This is credit card limit. You still got to pay for the credit card payment.
Right, right, right. And then just to take the, the 15 to, or the 25 and over, and what we do with that amount of money, do we, do we pay down debt or do we pay for projects? And I, and I know it's a tight rope depending on rates.
That's right.
So would we look at what would it do for us rate-wise, bond rating-wise, or we look at it, what it's going to save us in just money?
Saving money. It's not going to, it's not going to, that kind of dollar is not going to impact the bond rating. So it's really more of a financial decision. And part of that might be debt, is it callable right now or not? Right? Some of this debt's not callable for five or 10 years. So it'd be better off just to use it for a capital project.
Just use it for, for a project.
A project. Don't borrow anymore. Right.
Right. Cause 3 million's not going to buy us much in this, as, as things move forward.
Right. I mean, and there may be a situation where let's, let me go back to my debt service page. Oh, we're way back here. So it, just as an example, let's say, let's take your 3 million, for instance. If all of a sudden this was going to spike up to, to 10 million for two years and then drop back down, we might use that 3 million to shave that peak and pay debt service instead of.
And that's what I was looking for. What would the case be where we would use that?
We'd have to look at both. We'd look at the different scenarios and see what it makes, you know?
Okay.
You know, and it also depends upon what's going on in the market right now. I mean, in terms of the economy as well.
Right.
You know, do you have the capacity? Are you, are you seeing growth in your local economy that's going to raise your, your, your penny value to help pay for that? Or do we just need to use some cash to pay for that spike?
Okay.
If the rates are low enough, it's better to borrow.
Right. It's all going to be dependent on where the rates go.
Yeah, kind of. Yeah. There's a lot of different factors that we take into account and make that decision.
As long as I don't have any questions. I have a, I guess I'll have a real basic one. We have obviously the utility project. You know that that, we have a big utility project coming.
Yep.
That's going to be a huge cost. And the other thing too is, you know, we're going to have to at some point, as a reality face, our schools are, our schools are overcrowded beyond belief. We, we're going to be looking at, you know, there's a report coming out. We, we've got to build a new building. I mean, I'm starting to get phone calls like crazy about, you know, my students, we're in classrooms, and this is something that we probably should have looked at a few years ago was considering what Pendleton, how quickly Pendleton is building out. Can we, my question to you is, you know, building a new school is not cheap.
Right.
So, I mean, let's just put it out there for everyone. Can we afford to do the utility project, which we have to do? We don't really have a choice. I mean, as far as the needs are coming and then, and a school.
And, and I think the answer to that is, I'm going to go back to this, is the answer is yes. And if we, if the bond rating drops one notch, it's not a killer.
Okay.
Interest rates, right now, we're, we're talking about maybe 10 or 15 basis points higher because rates are very compressed right now. It's, it's not going to kill us. Let me say it a different way. I wouldn't make a decision on to do a project or not based on a bond rating.
Okay.
Yes, it's important. Don't get me wrong. That's what we're here to, to try to help guide you. But at the same time, you got to make an investment in the community. You got to make the investment. You still got to figure out how to pay for it. That's, I can't help you with that part. Right? We got to figure out how to pay for it. I'd love to help you with that, but I can't. And we know that the, like you said, the, that's part of why I wanted to show you this graph. We know the utility project, I don't even know what the number is. I haven't talked to, to staff in a long time about numbers, but we know it's a big number. Okay. So it's a big number. Yeah. So we know that, we know there's a lot out there.
Really, really big number.
But I think there's also an important one. We, we need to be modeling this out now and not just think about it each time you go through a budget process.
Yep. Okay.
If, if it's two years out, you know, I mean, realistically, let's, let's face it. I'm sure that the schools probably haven't got a plan for a new school sitting on the shelf somewhere. Somebody's got to draw up new plans and figure out what it's going to cost. That takes 12 months usually by itself. So we got to, you know, we, we need to plan, you know, have a plan in place and figure out when it, when it makes sense to work into our.
Yeah.
Financial debt service planning.
Um, yeah, okay.
That makes sense.
Yep. I think that we really need to start looking at that though seriously in the future when you're coming back, because that needs to be put in the, yes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just, just one, one quick one. The, the school board had a presentation yesterday on their, their maintenance, and they talked about deferred maintenance, things like that. Do we include any of that? Cause you just mentioned we, you know, we, we build a building and then 20 years later, we got to put a roof on it. I, I'm going to assume that most of our buildings in the school system need a roof or some roof repaired. We're doing that now, but I'm sure that's.
We, we have financed roof replacements over the years.
But is that part of what you're considering now? Or we didn't get that information from schools yet?
It's not in this tonight.
Okay.
This, that you're considering tonight was, was budgeted. I wasn't here, but this was, these additional borrowings are all the things that were approved in the CIP and, and the budget adoption. So this is just getting those, the patrol cars and the things that were, and mainly HBAC, the biggest thing is the HBAC at the middle school.
Right. That, that, that I understand. I just want to make sure we look a little forward and include all of the things we know are coming. Cause every 10 to 15 years, we got to replace a roof.
Right. We, we're doing that on the county side. We have software now that public works uses to give lifespans on things.
Right.
We're trying to do all that. And I, I think the schools are doing the same thing. So we'll, we'll get some of those presentations and add it into CIP as they move forward on those things as well. And while I'm here, one other thing I would like to add, we actually did cover once, that I know, and maybe it was twice, but once, we'll see what this year does. We covered utility debt service and operations.
Yeah.
We are growing at such a pace in Pendleton and Lady Smith Village and everywhere that historic, we did a zero transfer to utilities.
But that was on one-time connection fees, right?
Yeah, it was on connection. That's what, that's how you make it. That's, yeah. If you remember back before I got here, it was like 100, remember, 150 connections and all these things in that, in that, when we built the sewer plant and we were doing 12 and 20 and that type of thing. But the last few years since COVID, you know, our connections have gone up a bunch. And we've had some big commercial buildings that have, you know, a multitude of ERCs. And so we've actually covered. And we don't budget. Every year we budget for some transfer, but I think at least once, maybe to me could tell you maybe twice, we actually have fully covered utilities that haven't transferred anything. Can't predict that it's going to continue, but.
You're keeping that.
It is a good thing. When you said that, I wanted you to know that.
Now, I'm glad you said that because we're working another entity that seem, and I'm glad you're budgeting it. That is a smart way to do it. And then if you, it's there if you need it. Because the last thing you want to do is not having the budget and then things dip.
Make a dollar transfer.
We've seen it dip.
But the one other thing, just to be clear, is the connector that we're building is, that we've already borrowed for is probably woefully.
20 to 30% inflation to, to cover that, that $20 million project.
So we're going to be.
You're saying it's 24 million now? You're saying it's 24 million now?
Yeah, probably. And that's where, you know, he was talking about, we have 3 million? And maybe where we will come back to you with, that's a project we'd already approved. Inflation has raised it up and, and invest that money there. Don't go borrow anymore. Let's invest the cash we have in that to continue with that project.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the one.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, quick, to answer your question, in this year's debt service, and it's going to change year to year, the schools are 45% of that 9 million, 9.1 million. We can get you the whole schedule if you want it, but that's what it is as of April 25.
So we're like five, they're like four?
So, yeah, 20, yeah, 55, 45.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to, if possible, continue or let's go to our appointments. Does anyone have appointments for the Board of Equalization?
I do.
You do? Okay. Okay. We've got two. All right. Go ahead.
Ironically, I ran into Mrs. Mary Pitts Friday at the gas station and she's willing to serve again.
Okay.
And she covers the real estate. So we need two real estate people. So she's one of the two.
And Jimmy or James Street, Port Royal District.
So can I get a motion for?
So moved.
All right. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries. All right. If we could, Ms. Twiner is here from the YMCA. If we could go to, if you don't mind, new business, we have, you know, 30, 25 minutes to cover some stuff before our break. If we could go to the proposed drainage improvements at the YMCA. I don't know who is in charge of this. Mr. Cheval?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Colly received a call from the YMCA as well as with Mr. Whitman concerning the drainage at the back of the YMCA. As many of you know, when the YMCA was built, they removed a lot of dirt and stockpiled it behind the facility. And over the years, with normal erosion and sediment and settling, the erosion has pushed down to the, towards the back of the building. And now it's kind of slumped down where normal drainage can no longer hit the, the current drainage systems that's out there. So we've looked at that with our contractor and looked how we would address that. That's one area is directly behind the building, and it really has impacted them, one from the drainage also, but it's, it's keeping the foundation and footers wet all the time. And it's also preventing them from doing some of their programs. The other area is next to the parking lot, which is at this point is probably more critical than the first one. And that's simply because the way that the water is draining off of the stockpile and the proximity of that stockpile to the pavement, it is continuing to keep that pavement wet. It's continuing to, to have soil out onto the pavement area. The pavement is starting to crack because of the subsurface not being dry under there. And the only real way to correct, rectify all of this is really is to move the entire pile of dirt. But that would be somewhere around a quarter million dollars to move that. So what we propose of doing is one is putting, sloping in the back of the building, moving that back up and putting in some timber and putting in a 10-foot hard mulch buffer to slow the water down and then to catch any of the silt from moving down. The other area, we actually recommend putting in a, a foundation, a footing and putting in about a three-foot wall that would run around the entire edge down to the drainage area. At the bottom of that wall, there would be drain tiles. So it would collect all that water before it gets to that parking lot, and it would also hold that soil back. So we've looked at both of those options and came up with proposals. The, the first one was $9,656, and the second one was $37,666. For total for the whole project would be $47,322.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, yeah. All right. Mr. Sealy?
So is this all our property?
Yes.
So we own all this property and the dirt that's there?
Yes, sir.
So why wasn't this removed when the YMCA was built? Because we've, we don't have or should have a policy about piling dirt, first of all.
When I got here and found out that dirt, he'll tell you this. I found out this dirt was being left. That was the sole part. Remember how the Y was built? We didn't build it as the county. We, we.
Correct.
Granted, to use the right legal term, granted money to the YMCA who then hired the contractor. They, they drew their own plans and they built the building. And so as a cost savings, you know, the building was, wasn't it $5 million, $5 million we granted? They didn't have any money to move that dirt pile.
Here's my question for Mr. Hughes. What is the county policy, zoning policy on stockpiling dirt around the county?
I think it's got to be stabilized under, under soil and, uh, soil, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, but we're, we're, are we going to allow? Because this is going to come up later for me. So I'm glad we moved forward because this is a problem a lot of places. So what is the county's, what is our zoning and stormwater management position on dirt that's, because not only is this dirt from us, there used to be a huge mountain of dirt from Lady Smith Village that was also there. And this whole elevation is three or four feet. The fire hydrant, if you'll look at it, is six feet in the air. I don't know if it's still like that or not.
So is the main about.
But all of this has been a pointed contention for 10 years. And now it's back on us to fix this problem that we didn't enforce. that we didn't enforce from, from a zoning or from a, from a building perspective when this was going on.
It's an ENS situation and in accordance with the ENS code, any stockpile needs to be stabilized.
But do we, do we by ordinance allow it to be stockpiled anywhere they want?
There is no ordinance relates to stockpile. If you stockpile dirt, you can stockpile dirt on your property, but you have to stabilize it. Stabilizing means growing growth on it. So if I have a pile of dirt there, to stabilize it, I want to do ENS measures around the base and then I need to have growth occur in that stockpile. So it needs to be, have grass or vegetation coming out of the stockpile. So there is no ordinance that prevents stockpiling of dirt.
Can we have an ordinance that prevents it?
Wouldn't that the only, yeah.
No, 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 let me, let me, because
You, you could, but like I said, there are, one of the things that we do now as part of our environmental uh, enforcement is to try to identify these areas and get them stabilized.
Do we want dirt piles a hundred feet tall because they're stabilized, left behind? Do we, do we as a county really want that? Because it's a future problem. The one that was there before was like a volcano, the inside of it was full of water. And the real fear was that was going to actually come through all the way to the base and explode the whole pile and run it on everything.
Well, I wouldn't consider that stabilized if there was water collecting in a, in a stockpile. But that's not a stabilized stockpile.
Stabilization is only as good as everybody who inspects it. And, and once we say you can stabilize this mountain of dirt, whether, I mean, we've got mountains sitting outside of the distribution center now that they've got stacked as a pyramid. Is that really what we want every place? And can we, can we put together an ordinance that prohibits that?
I just, Mr. Sealy, the only thing is with some of those, like, uh, with some instances, like if you're building a berm, like we've, we've had situations in the past where we've had, um, you know, mines have come to us and we wanted them to build berms.
Correct. But they need that dirt afterwards to put back. But these facilities aren't going to put this dirt back. This dirt is forever.
But my, my, yeah.
And, and it, it's perpetuity.
So, so Mr. Sealy, once, if you disturb more than 2,500 square feet of land and you stockpile 2,500 square feet of dirt, then you have to have a plan as a part of that stockpile. So there's an ordinance in place now and there are laws in place now through the county and through the Commonwealth to address, you know, stabilization of stockpiles.
But we didn't stabilize this and, and neither did the developer before this. And so the sins of the past come back to haunt us. So my point is, as we move forward, I'd like to see a draft ordinance on what we could do about stockpiles of dirt because they're going to become a problem. And we can't have 100-foot piles of dirt everywhere and they call them stabilized. And then when they're not, then what? Who's responsible? Cause there's no bond for those.
Well, it's the property owner's responsibility.
I mean, that's a great, that's a great philosophy. I just know what happens.
I mean, that's why the county is addressing the issue at the Y because it's the county's property. So it's our responsibility as the county to deal with it. That's why we're dealing with it. So, you know, if, if it becomes an environmental situation, if that stockpile happens to leave that property and happens to impact some environment sensitive areas, it becomes an issue not only for the county, but also if they're the owners of the US, then the Corps gets involved.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Underwood, do you have any? Mr. Not me, Mrs. Long?
Yes, I have a question. I wasn't on the board when the Y was built, but isn't it the contractor, part of the contractor's job to, to do landscaping and to get rid of that?
No, if you don't make them.
Who was, who was, who was doing it? Is it something we could go back and have them finish?
No, that was, that was part of the plan. What was left there was graded and seeded as part of the plan when they built the Y. We did not build the Y. We gave the, the, uh, main Y, Black Hand K Y, um, $5 million. That's what they left us. We've worked on it before. I've been with him before because it was growing up in trees on the slope. And I said, that's going to root and it's going to grow, get all that cut down. So we've taken machines over there ourselves and tried to fix it. But right out the back door of the Y, you don't have to go very far to the screen there and you're going up a, a hill.
I've seen it. I just wondered if we could go back to the contractor and get him to do something.
No, because we don't have any, we have no standing. We don't have a, we, that was not our contract.
Okay.
I guess for me, I guess my concern is, I see this, I'll be honest with you, I'm not an engineer. I see this as putting a Band-Aid on the problem.
The dirt needs to move, but it's expensive.
The dirt needs to be moved. The dirt pile has been there forever and to me, this is just a Band-Aid. We can try this engineering, your dirt pile is still going to be there. And when you get into a heavy rain situation, something like that, I don't know what this fix right here, we get some sort of tropical storm, whatever come in, your dirt pile is still there. So to me, if we're going to, this is our property and we need to really take care of it, we need to seriously look and, and bite the bullet and, and, and remove the dirt. I, I, I don't see why, I mean, because we're going to be coming back and then we're going to be coming back five to 10 years down the line and we're going to have to do it again and then removing the dirt is going to be even more expensive.
If you want, we could
That's just for the wall. That, that is, that, that is not going to solve because we've got
We can bring, we can bring you a plan, we, we can bring you a plan back of what it would take to, the, the cheapest we can figure out to move it and, um, and, and what those costs would be.
But I, I'm looking at the bigger picture. I'd like to see an ordinance for all these dirt piles.
We'll work on that as well.
So let's just, so why don't we, do we have a, you want to just for that for now, if we just kind of delay this or table it?
Let's just table this and see, because
Yeah, we'll try to bring this back at the October, first meeting in October.
Direct the staff to get more information on total.
Correct, correct. Some other, we'll come up with some other ideas about trying to level the pile out to a workable height.
Cause you still do have a fire hydrant over there.
That's a different side and wait a minute.
Yeah, I know, it's on the other side.
The main, you can't take the fire hydrant down and that whole hump of dirt down. Cause I've tried since it got done like that. The main is up there in that dirt.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, it's such time that Lady Smith Village ever goes over there, because that's a part of Lady Smith Village, they'll have to replace all of that main. So we don't want that cost because I've been after him to move that goofy fire hydrant nobody can use without a ladder. But the main is up above grade, main is above the road there.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome, Ms. Twiner. You're, you're welcome. All right, um, let's go ahead to do number, uh, can we do number 16?
You've got to do, well, you can, you can do consent.
Oh, yeah, I've skipped over consent. All right, sorry. Uh, can I get a motion for consent?
No. I want to pull E.
E?
Good, that's what I was going to pull.
Okay, we're pulling E. All right, so we're pulling E. Anyone else A through G? With the exception of E, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda with the exception of item E.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. E.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would definitely like to delay this. Um, it's not going to hurt anything, but I would like to have LGI, who's now the current owner of the property, to understand that if we do this, excuse my gum, they will no longer be able to park on the street.
Thank you.
Which is the real issue. For those who don't know, because of this project, Edwards Road was closed.
Right.
And the only access to 301 South for all of the residents who are in that area has been through Brookwood. But it appears that the sales reps from Brookwood like to park their cars in the middle of the street and that causes a hazard. So we're going to ask them, or we're going to have staff ask them to make sure they understand that if these roads become state roads, the sheriff will tow their cars if their cars are parked on the street.
Okay, sounds good. So we're just, we're just going to, uh,
We're going to, we're going to have staff, I'm, I'm directing staff to write a letter to LGI, who now owns that property. Gerald is no longer involved, but make sure LGI is aware that if they park their cars on the street after they become state roads, they will be towed by the sheriff.
Okay. All right, so it is 7:21. Do we have time to do?
We should take a break because we need to get out.
We have number 16? I think we can get 16 in, that will cover new business. Yep, 16.
Just for clarification, you are deferring on that item, consent agenda item, correct?
Yes.
We're deferring that item until I see the letter from LGI.
Can we, can we get a number, someone for 16 before we go to break? All right, never mind that. I think the board wants to go now, Mr. Parton. Well, we'll go ahead and break now. I think they want to go ahead now. So we'll go ahead and break now. It'll take about a 10, 15 minute and we will back shortly after 7:30. We are a recess. Good evening. Julia Yandura, Mattaponei Voting District. I appreciate that you guys added something to the agenda under new business. I don't think that has a public hearing, so I'm still good to, okay, comment. So I sent you all a letter last Friday. I hope you all received that in your email. And I want to speak about that tonight. I would like to state that it is for everybody here, it is about data centers. And I am not opposed to data centers in Caroline County. I support data center growth within this, the pert of the county. I think they present an opportunity for us to get additional tax revenue. And I would like to see some development within the pert of that nature so that we can get that additional tax revenue. However, outside of the pert, there it is a concern. And after speaking with several people in the county, I understand that it doesn't necessarily come to you immediately. You don't know necessarily of all the planned development until it kind of comes to you guys for approvals. But there are residents who have done a lot of research and looked things up, and there is a lot of development that is potentially coming to our county. And so the three requests that I sent you is to try and put some safeguards in place to keep data centers in the pert and not outside of it. One data center requires the same amount of electricity of approximately 1,000 homes. There is not a single plot of land within our county that can support a data center without upgrades to our transmission lines or additional transmission lines being built. Upgrades to our transmission lines are paid for by the residents through rate hikes. They are not paid for by the developers. New transmission lines are the same. They all require electrical substations. The Lee Hill upgrades that were submitted to the SCC a week ago, maybe two weeks ago, don't quote me on that, but on the same exact day REC submitted a four percent increase for our residents. Every single data center is a rate increase to the residents. The transmission lines are paid for by the residents. In addition, the transmission lines go over private property to build them, and people can lose their land via eminent domain. These two reasons alone are enough to require that every single data center outside the pert receives special scrutiny. It should require special approval. We should not improve the, approve the industrial use water, and we should not switch rural preservation land to industrial for the purpose of data centers. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding anything that is not a public hearing?
Dr. Calverick.
Good evening, Chair Black. I'm Sarah Calverick, Superintendent of Schools, and thought I would capitalize on Davenport's presentation this evening and indeed reiterate that last night we were privileged to receive the draft copy of the facility study for CCPS facilities. We also are anticipating at our October seventh meeting to receive our demographic study results. These two documents will be married, and we will ultimately receive recommendations associated with three different options: building a new facility, renovating a facility, or creating an addition. And I guess the fourth would be that maybe there is nothing that could be needed. And so we just wanted to make sure you were keenly aware of our timeline. I have, of course, had the opportunity be hip to hip with many of you at community events and have kept you abreast casually. But I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly state that we indeed want to be working collaboratively with the administrative team. And I do intend on reaching out to Mr. Cully and sharing the reports and establishing a meeting time for the administrative team to meet with our CCPS senior leadership. And then ultimately, our school board would like to request that in late October, we establish an evening meeting that affords two to three hours for both boards to come together outside of a regularly scheduled Board of Supervisor or School Board meeting. Because this depth and breadth and volume of data will require some extensive dialogue so we can ultimately develop a plan that meets the financial needs of the county, but also demonstrates our due diligence to the needs of our youth. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Calverick. We look forward to hearing. And we will schedule a meeting sometime in late October for that. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding anything that is not a public hearing?
Good evening, Chairman Black, rest of the board. I'd like to reiterate what Julia had said tonight about making data centers a special exception within the county, no matter where they are outside of the pert. I too sent a letter of similar nature back in August. It was actually before the last meeting. And I don't know how it works for you guys, but I would imagine if a constituent sends you an email, the least you could do is maybe respond and said you got the email and not ignore it. There were only two people that responded to that email: Chairman Black and Mr. Sealy. I had no other response from any representative. And it would just be nice to maybe, you know, I know you get a lot of emails, but if it's from someone and they take the time to write you a detailed letter, respond. You don't have to like what's in the letter, but it is your job to listen and represent every constituent, not just the ones that you pick. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening, Chairman Black and members of the board. Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. I just heard a news report on the way home from work tonight about a northern Virginia county seeking to place controls on data centers. And it continues to puzzle me why this had not been done on either a state or local level. I spend time contemplating why, in recent history, the data center industry has such an appetite for new land and building sites as insatiable as its appetite for electricity and water. To be honest, I'm quite frightened of the many implications of this artificial intelligence, like artificial ingredients, that do not bode well on the health of our society and natural world. You and your staff spent a great deal of time setting definitions of the pert zoning, and many meetings were held defining the new, the new location in our master plan. Not counting Mattamede, the pert area in Carmel Church was chosen geographically as the reason this sector was to locate in. I was quite blindsided to learn that a data center may locate on M1 industrial property. I believe this counting, planning and the board, I believe counting, planning and the board should take action to establish guidelines for data centers who wish to locate in an industrial zone. And that is to make a special exemption permit process with public hearing so county and citizen stakeholders may have input on siting and conditions. Additionally, rural preservation land should continue to be protected by our comprehensive plan and not subject to the whims of outside interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on anything that is not a public hearing?
Good evening. My name's Mark Sandor. I'm in the Massapee District. And I understand data centers are the thing right now, but on these projects, developer-initiated projects that require infrastructure investments that us, the working people and, and families of the county have to pay for, what concerns me is that there, there is no comprehensive look being done either by the General Assembly or enrichment about how these costs should be borne by the developers that want to do the, do this kind of work. It should not be ratepayers paying for the whole cost. This corporate welfare needs to be, needs to be shouldered by the, the, the developers. And my question or, or hope is that this, this county board will, in concert with others, contact the General Assembly or State Corporation Commission and ask for an honest look at rate structures, particularly when it impacts utilities that working families have to pay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to discuss anything that is not a public hearing? If you, if you were gonna speak, yes, I probably should, should have said this earlier, Mr., if you were gonna speak, maybe you could come down on the, for the public comments. So go quicker. If you're, just sit up front, and we'll do that at a public hearing as well.
Hi, I'm just wanted to know, like, what are the detrimental impacts that you're planning, you know, for these data centers as far as how the water is going to be used? I'm Jennifer Joyce, and I'm from the Mattaponei North District. So my question is, or, you know, my concerns are the detrimental impact that it's going to have on our ecosystem. Like, how are these, how much water is taken up? Where are you going to cool it off? Are you going to just send it back hot? How much is used? How much is evaporated through steam, through heat? You know, I'm, I'm really worried about the ecology of our ecosystem. And I don't really feel like this should have been presented without having a vote from the county, from the constituents first. You know, I think that we should have all had a say on planning a data center in our system, in our environment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding anything that is not a public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Chris Smith, and I'm from the Madison area. I've been here about seventeen years. I moved here because of the beautiful land we have here. I've come from where people come in and say, oh, these things are going to be great. They're going to work out well. They're going to improve our economy. But what they don't do is improve our land, our peace of mind, our light pollution, our air pollution, our noise pollution. I just hope that you will take that into account, that just putting some trees up between a data center and us is not going to take care of all that stuff. And I hope that people are doing more research on it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding anything that is not a public hearing?
Hello, I'm Stephen Dean. I live in Louisa County. I've been a pipefitter for twenty-five years, construction. I've worked at about half dozen of these places. Seems like they enhance the whole county. There's a, we've got a whole bunch of apprentices back there. They've been working. It's, the whole county, like, afterwards, you got people that got, cut the grass, got people that work there. It puts a lot of people to work. I am a lot for this, these data centers. There's a lot of disruption during the initial construction, of course, but after that, it's like smooth sailing. And, I mean, I just think it's, it's good for the county. So we got one coming in Louisa, and I think y'all should really go forward with it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that is not, on something that is not a public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Chris Smith, and I'm from the Madison area. I've been here about seventeen years. I moved here because of the beautiful land we have here. I've come from where people come in and say, oh, these things are going to be great. They're going to work out well. They're going to improve our economy. But what they don't do is improve our land, our peace of mind, our light pollution, our air pollution, our noise pollution. I just hope that you will take that into account, that just putting some trees up between a data center and us is not going to take care of all that stuff. And I hope that people are doing more research on it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on anything that is not a public hearing? Is there anything else who'd like to speak on anything that's not a public hearing?
Good evening. Joe Padgett. I'm from the Reedy Creek area. I live on McBryant Road. We've been in county for sixteen years. Previously worked for the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. I started looking at these proposals, and I don't think enough due diligence has been done to, and presented to y'all in order to do, make an informed decision. Some of the things I found out, seventy percent of data centers in the world, not in the state, in the world, are in Virginia. Data centers require massive amounts of electricity. In fact, according to JAL Research in 2027, and the average rack density is set to reach fifty kilowatt per rack. Just one building, it's a hundred and eighty thousand square feet in the culpeper center, will use forty megawatts of electricity. use 40 megawatts of electricity. The electric transmission projects needed for this level of development will affect the quality of life, water, water sheds, views, and will impact not only the cluster, as it says in the thing, cluster residential uses on Dry Bridge and McBryant, but on many parts of the community. When you start putting high tension lines through, it doesn't just affect a small group where the buildings are occurring. Also, data centers require massive amounts of water. In 2012, the Google Data Center in Dallas used 104 million gallons of water a year. Site developers make every effort not to disclose water volume and I wonder why that is. Building space used for data centers average 100,000 square feet per building. The existing PERT is 1,466 acres, the existing one. Culpeper has an 85 acre campus that will accommodate up to three facilities, meaning three buildings, totaling 1.4 million square feet and 192 megawatts of critical IT load. The existing PERT is more than sufficient for both current and future uses. And people were questioning, there's currently a J-Lark Audit Review Commission study in progress ordered by the legislature. And I think it would be, I don't think there would be any critical loss to the county to wait for those results of that report before moving ahead with any changes until the J-Lark study is completed.
Sir, can you go wrap it up please? It's time, it's time.
Yep. It's the last time I looked, sorry. Thanks for your consideration. I respectfully request the board supervisors follow recommendations of the planning commission and deny the comprehensive plan amendment.
Sir, this is, that's part of the public hearing. So this is public comment. This was, that's part of the public hearing. If we're gonna, we're talking about the public hearing. You're talking about the public hearing. And this is public comment time that has nothing to do with the public hearing. Thank you. If you want to talk about anything that is not officially the public hearing, you may do so, but we cannot talk legally about the public hearing in the public comment time. So if anyone has anything to say in general about data centers, that is fine, but the PERT that we're going to be taking on the public hearing is for the public hearing.
Hello, my name is Patsy Daniels and I live in the Bowling Green District. I'm a software engineering manager and I totally understand the need for data centers. You know, we build AI models, machine learning where I work. I moved to Caroline County. I bought a beautiful 83 acre farm with, and there's power lines that run through my property. They have a ride away through to the property. I came here because it's beautiful and I wanted to own a beautiful farm. I don't want the risk of an energy company trying to extend their ride away and ruin my beautiful farm. So I would ask if I wanted to live near data centers, I would have lived in Northern Virginia. So I would ask that you please consider keeping that development in the PERT and not in other commercial areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on anything that is not a public hearing?
Board Chairman Nick Daniels, Bowling Green District. I want to speak on the data centers and I've been in construction for most of my career now. I've worked at QTS, Facebook, over there in Hemarico. And these centers, I'm not opposed to them, but keeping it within some guidelines that you guys come up with that are reasonable and don't just allow them to pop up all over the county, special permits and stuff that have to be approved through the board. One thing I've seen with these data centers is initially they bring a lot of jobs through the contractors constructing them, pipe fitters, welders, the whole envelope of the building. But once they're up and running, they're more or less self-sustaining with minimal maintenance. A lot of them are maintained by management companies. There's several in the Richmond area. So you're talking about minimal jobs for the people of Caroline, which they may be jobs that people are coming from other areas, not necessarily Caroline County residents. So something to keep in mind when you go to approve these things and consider then the energy requirements and the water requirements. Bowling Green's running out of water. So I mean, I think there's bigger issues on the table before you focus all your energy on getting data centers approved in the county. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on anything that is not a public hearing? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on anything that is not a public hearing? With that in mind, I will close the public comment period and we will move on to the public hearing. So is this Mr. Who is, who is Mr. Hughes?
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the public hearing on the potential expansion of the Carmel Church growth area for the purpose of including additional acreage in the future with the future land use designation of Plan Innovation Research Technology Park or PERT. The PERT land use designation was added to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan at the end of 2023 when the board approved the designation for two areas of the county, the Madamed area in the northern portion of the county on Route 606 and the area we are discussing tonight in the northeast portion of the Carmel Church growth area. In June 2023, the County Board of Supervisors amended the comprehensive plan to designate this area for the development of technology-based industries, specifically data centers and data center uses and ancillary uses that support that industry. The existing area is comprised of 1,466 acres in the northeast section of the Carmel Church growth area. This area was identified as being appropriate for this designation because it has infrastructure to support data center uses and has proximity to water and wastewater facilities and the area is not densely populated. There are existing industrial land uses and on several parcels in the area that are currently zoned industrial in this area, as I noted, is not densely populated. The companion zoning classification is the PERT zoning district in Article 11 of the Plan Unit Development Section of the zoning ordinance. The PERT zoning ordinance has standards for the built environment for data center campuses. The ordinance incorporates submission and development standards that are intended to further mitigate impacts of data centers with minimum setbacks from property lines and public rows of 100 feet with a 40-foot undisturbed area in that setback. They are required to have a plan that shows a minimum of 20% preservation of trees and natural open space. Not more than 50% of the construction footprint shall be disturbed at any time without permanent vegetation established. Water collection systems are required that return water to the ground. Landscaping requirements that require plants to grow a minimum of eight feet within three years of planting or berms of eight feet if they choose to use berms. Limits on the noise at the property line is 60 decibels. And any generator within 1,000 feet of an existing residence, school or place of worship shall be enclosed and muffled. Substations must be at least 600 feet from any school, existing residential, residential use, place of worship, public road with an H card designation and screening of rooftop and ground mechanical equipment This is an image of the county's current future land use map with the current PERT areas outlined in red. The area that we are discussing tonight is in the middle of the, on the map, at the center of the slide here. This dashed line here represents the Carmel Church growth area. This area here is existing PERT area. The area in white within the growth area is identified as rural transition. The area on the outside of the growth area throughout the county is identified as rural preservation. The rural preservation area is a significant portion of the future land use map with approximately 31% of the future land area identified with that classification. Ag preservation or the green area on the map is approximately 41% of the land use area designated in the county. The comp plan language notes that these areas should have low density residential development with less intensive agricultural uses and should serve as buffers between planned areas planned for intensive agricultural uses and other land use categories. The current comp plan was adopted in 2010 with the goal of guiding growth in the county for 20 years to the year 2030. The county has been a strong comprehensive plan community during this period. Being a strong comp plan community does not mean that the plan should not change until it reaches its horizon year. The comp plan is a living document that is intended to be adjusted as community organically evolves or when development patterns emerge that benefit the community. This plan is six years from its horizon year. In the case of this proposed expansion, the evolution of technology and the availability of infrastructure along with the current development pattern are the elements that support potential expansion. A goal of the current plan is to guide development to the most appropriate areas and that is deemed areas that have infrastructure to support the development. Expansion of the growth area for PERT uses establishes where the county deems these uses are appropriate. As a reminder, a change to the future land use designation does not change the zoning classification, nor does it allow new uses. It only identifies areas where the county deems these uses are appropriate. At a community meeting in April and at the public hearing with the planning commission in June, citizens did express concerns about the proposed expansion of the potential and the potential negative impacts it may have on the quality of life. Citizens raised concerns related to increased traffic, change in the character of the area, noise and the loss of open space. So this is the future land use map of the Carmel Church growth area and this plan kind of depicts the evolution of the land use designations in the CCGA. When adopted in 2010, the area was designated as appropriate for heavy industrial and industrial office uses. So in 2010, when the plan was adopted, this purple area was identified for heavy industrial uses. This strip along here was identified for industrial and office uses. This area in here was identified as rural transition and I should note that there have been a number of rezonings in that white area prior to the PERT being introduced last In 2023, the PERT designation was introduced, replacing the heavy industrial. The PERT designation reduces the intensity of the expected land uses. There are 34 by right and 24 special exception uses in the M1 industrial zoning classification and the PERT zoning classification has 10 by right uses with four special exception uses. The PERT zoning classification also includes 41 required development standards. M1 developments are subject to 10 development standards. It should be noted that there have been, as I noted, several M1 zonings outside of the area identified as heavy industrial and office industrial in this area. The current PERT area is comprised of 1,466 acres is outlined in red. The proposed expansion adds an approximately 1,635 acres outlined in blue. And for clarification, so the existing PERT area that was adopted in 20, at the end of 2023 is this red area. The proposed expansion would be extending this line to Route 207, which extends here and then extending the line, stop the growth area line, which stops right here, out along this boundary here, along Saddle Creek, down to the south, along Dry Bridge Road in this area here. The, excuse me, as I know, sorry, let me go back here. One thing I wanted to point out, as moving this boundary out to here and designing this area as PERT would change and lessen the intensity of expected development within this area. And I'll show you a zoning map later. Most of this property here is not zoned for industrial uses now. There are a couple of parcels in here that are zoned industrial, but the majority is not zoned industrial. But as I noted, going from the industrial to the PERT designation is essentially lessening the expected intensity of development. So this is an aerial of the area that shows the current land uses and as noted, there are approximately 82 acres of this area that is in field cultivation, which is approximately 2.6% of the total 3,101 acres if this area is expanded. There are approximately 300 acres of wetlands in the proposed expansion area with the Polk Cat Creek to the north as here as a boundary and then with the Reedy Creek at the bottom as a boundary as well. And what I wanted to point out is, you know, when this area was initially identified, as you can see, there's a lot of undeveloped land in here and timber and then these are the areas, these white areas here and here and here and here that are areas that are in cultivation. Should also point out that this boundary, as it is drawn, essentially follows parcel boundaries. And so here's a map that kind of notes that. So this boundary follows a parcel boundary around here, which is essentially one large parcel to there and then there's a couple of smaller parcels, a parcel here, a parcel here, and then parcel here and here. This area that is above the creek here is approximately 200 acres and there's a significant portion of this area that is in wetlands.
Mr. Hughes, before you, before you go any further, Mr. Hughes?
Sure.
Can you, can you point out where Belmont is? It's the lower left corner, right?
Yes, and I'll have a slide in a minute that will certainly show. That's Belmont right here.
And where's Panola Road?
Panola Road is here, approximately a half mile from this parcel boundary in this direction is Panola Road. That's 2.6 miles that way.
Thank you.
So this slide is just to illustrate the parcel, existing parcel boundaries and for citizens' orientation, this is Dry Bridge Road right here that comes around here. This is where the split occurs. We have Dry Bridge and McBryant Road there. So this is a current zoning map of the Carmel Church growth area. This is the entire growth area. And so the black line on the perimeter represents the Carmel Church growth area. Again, the red line is the existing PERT and then this blue line represents the area of proposed expansion. And I provide this slide just to illustrate, you know, the current zoning pattern and development pattern in this area. And as you can see, the industrial development pattern is extending up 207 towards this PERT area. This is just a zoomed in view of the zoning in the immediate area of the existing PERT and proposed expansion. And as you can see, there's a significant amount of industrial zone property currently within the PERT area and that extends beyond the current boundary. So the red boundary is the PERT boundary now. And as you can see, this industrial zoning extends beyond the PERT boundary here and also in this area here. The area I spoke of along 207 here, this is the area that is currently zoned industrial there. So in terms of speaking of it, lessening the intensity along that area, if this area is designated for PERT, if someone came along and asked for a PERT designation along 207, they would have increased setbacks, which provide a hand screening and so would protect the view shed along the corridor. Whereas now, with the M designation and the industrial zoning, there's little requirement for protection along and screening along the view shed. So essentially, what we could potentially have is what we have on Enterprise Drive where the new Lingerfeld building went up that sits relatively close to Route 207 with limited screening from Route 207. So this map represents the current residential density in the area and the proximity of So this map represents the current residential density in the area and the proximity of homes within a half mile to the boundary of the existing and expanded areas. There are thirteen-point-five homes per square mile depicted in this image. Note that this includes the Belmont subdivision, which is here, and that is ninety homes, and if those homes are not included in the calculation, the homes per square mile drops to six homes per square mile. The by right development potential of the proposed expansion area, we are considering and considering the environmental constraints, is one hundred and thirty-one single-family homes, which equates to three hundred and sixty-six new residents, one hundred and thirty-one students, and thirteen hundred and ten vehicle trips per day. If each home is valued at six hundred and fifty thousand, the total annual tax revenue would be approximately six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for all one hundred and thirty-one homes.
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. No, it's a value if each home was valued at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
How many homes in the county are worth six hundred and fifty thousand dollars? I mean, you probably got that number from Fredericksburg Realtors, but that's not the average house.
That's, that's based, no, that price is based on the square footage per price of about twenty-one hundred dollars per square foot for new construction. So if you look at what's being constructed in the county, new construction coming along would potentially be in that area.
Okay.
Yeah. So like I said before, a total of six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for all one hundred and thirty-one homes. So based on prior evaluations of data centers, a single building of two hundred and fifty thousand square feet would generate approximately six-point-two million dollars in tax revenue And so what I wanted to point out here with this slide is the fact that the half-mile radius now from the existing pert is the blue area, and you can see the number of homes that are within that half-mile radius, and if the area was to expand, that half-mile radius moves out to the pink line, and that's where it picks up the Belmont, and then it picks up these existing residential units here would now be within a half mile of the pert boundary. McBryant Road is here on the, in this area here, and you can see there's a cluster of residential units here, and there's a cluster of residential units in here as well as here. So as I noted, this is a proposed change to the future land use map. If it's approved, it would not change the zoning classification of any parcel, nor to permit any uses, new uses, to come into the area. Anyone who wanted to have a new use for a data center in this area would still have to go through the rezoning process, which would require an amendment to the pert designation. The planning commission held a public hearing on July 25th and voted to recommend denial of the amendment. There were a number of citizens who spoke at the public hearing in opposition to the case, and with that, this concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Is there any, you all set, Mr. Hughes? Is there any board member who has a question beforehand? All right, I will go ahead then and open the public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing, CA 03, 2024-2030 Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the pert. All right, at this time, the public hearing is open. Now is your time to talk about the expansion of the pert, if you have any comments or concerns. If you do wish to speak, it would make it easier if people would like to speak, to come closer to the front, so as one person gets done, another person can get up to speak. Just state your name and your voting district, ma'am.
My name is Cindy Crane, and I'm from the Reedy Church District. I get confused. I was just rezoned. Would it be possible to put the last slide back up? I want to show you who I am on the slide and why this is important. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. That other one was fine. Yep. See the green star to the right there? Guess who that is? That's me. So I have a few questions. I just heard, I've been to all the meetings in reference to this. Mr., I just forgot his name. He did say, the first meeting we had, the citizens did not want this to move forward. The planning commission did not want this to go forward. So I just heard him say that this is a plan from 2010. I've been here for over thirty years, in my little woods on the Green Star. My driveway is a mile-long dirt driveway. No one's talked to us. No one has come and said this is an idea. That's interesting. So whose job was that? Anybody's? I guess not. The next thing I wanted to say is literally, as you can see the green star, my front door, I can see where Mr. Jefferson has cut his trees. That's how close that is to my house. I really want to be included in this if we're going to move forward. I don't want to move forward. I don't want to have to move. I have five grandchildren who love living in the country in the summer. They have what they call a hunting tent right now, where they took a box and put a tarp over it, and they can't wait for hunting season. How will this impact our county? What will happen to our wildlife? What will happen to my grandchildren? Those are the questions I want answered. The next thing, I build dialysis centers. So when you talk about electric and water, I know exactly what we're talking about. Wastewater, I know what we're talking about. I had to pay, on average, because people have not upgraded their sewer lines, two-hundred to three-hundred thousand dollars for every dialysis center you see. That's what it costs to hook up to the tap fees. So have we thought about any of that? Electric is the same as well as water. We use a lot of water in dialysis, so we pay a big fine.
Ma'am, could you go ahead and wrap it up?
So I just want to conclude with, I don't think this has been brought to the public of Caroline County at all. This is amazing to me it's gotten this far, and I live right there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the pert, expanding pert? Just state your name and your voting district.
Good evening, Bob Ferrer, Mattapanai District. I'm here to encourage you to vote against the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan. You, as our board members, are entrusted with important duty representing the citizens of this county, and the comprehensive plan is honestly a superb document. I know that because I've actually read the darn thing from page one to the end in every single appendix. It serves not as a guide for you, but for every citizen in the county, because we make our plans for our future and our homes and our properties based on that. The comprehensive plan states it allows property owners throughout the county to make investment decisions, which is true, in a stable environment. I'm going to make a couple quotes out of the comprehensive plan. One, it states that it's a blueprint for future development, and it is. It's a good one. Growth can be accomplished in a manner that maximizes the benefits of county residents and businesses without negatively affecting the many attributes of the county. Lastly, conformance with the comprehensive plan provides the Board of Supervisors with the strongest and most offensive basis for its decisions, so I encourage you to vote no on this proposal to amend it. Thank you.
Bob, before you go, would you spell your last name?
Ferrer. F-E-R-R-E-R.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Chairman Black, members of the board. I'd have to go back and count, but I've stood at this podium, I don't even know how many times, to talk about amendments to our comprehensive plan. And quite frankly, I'm sick and tired of our county planning department constantly saying that this is a document that needs to be updated and changed every few years. That is not what a comprehensive plan is meant to do. By law, they should be reviewed every five years, and changes shouldn't be made because you want them to. You have to go and listen to the members of the community for these changes. The Matamede pert area is, I think, twelve or thirteen hundred acres. This pert area here is fourteen hundred acres. I was never good at math, but twenty-seven hundred acres is a big chunk of land that we've already dedicated to this. We spent waking hours, I don't know how many hours you guys spent on it, but a lot of time was put into the pert designation. We've already tried expanding it to the west. Now we're trying to expand it to the east. When does it stop? When do you actually look at the comprehensive plan and follow it? Because this isn't what we want as residents of Caroline County. Growth needs to go where it was decided to go based on the comp plan. You don't just change it because one rich landowner comes and approaches you and says, hey, I can get more money for my land if it's in the pert, because that's all this is. It's one landowner that's pushing for this. Members of the community didn't come to the county and say, you know what, we really want that pert area in Carmel Church to be twice the size, because we don't think it's big enough. It's plenty big, and there's no one that has put a shovel in the ground in any of these perts. We're almost a year out from approving Matamede. Not a peep, not a shovel. We don't even have a water agreement with Spotsylvania to provide water to the campus. But here we are, suggesting that we keep expanding the pert. There's a definition, or I believe it's insanity, and it's doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Knock it off. We don't want the comp plan to change. Build where it's supposed to go, and you won't have people coming to every meeting ramming this down your throat. It's very simple. Listen to your constituents. It's not that hard. Some of you are good at it, some of you might not be. We all need to work together and get better at it, because without the word and the thoughts of the constituents, you guys don't sit up there. They put you up there for a reason, and that's to follow what the citizens of this county want, not what high-paid lawyers and landowners that don't even live in this county want. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the expanded pert?
Good evening, Chairman Black, members of the board. My name's Eric Lambert. I am the Assistant Business Manager for IBW, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 666. The electricians union serve in central Virginia. We represent over thirteen hundred skilled electricians, including many who call Caroline County home. I am here tonight in support of the proposed amendment, which I believe will lead to years of quality construction jobs right here in Caroline County. Over the past decade, hundreds of our members have been employed on data centers' construction projects. These projects demand extensive electrical work, and clients consistently rely on the skilled and professionalism the IBW can bring to the table. Our union operates an apprenticeship program that allows individuals to earn while they learn. Apprentices attend classes and gain real-world experience working alongside seasoned electricians. This amendment would have the potential to create new jobs, in which turns allows us to take on more apprentices and provide more opportunities for Caroline County residents to work. Currently, we have around three hundred apprentices and a number made possible in part due to data center construction. With this amendment, we hope to expand even further. We actively recruit from local high schools and the community. Many apprentices from Caroline County have now currently had to travel to Richmond and RICO Chesterfield County for work. This proposal will give them an opportunity, a chance, to work closer to home, allowing them to contribute directly to the development of their community. In closing, I urge the board to support this amendment. It will not only provide a long-term, stable job for Caroline County residents, but it will also help grow a local skilled workforce that benefits everybody in the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this expanded pert?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Black and members of the board. My name is Steve Norum. I'm in the, I think, the Reedy Church District. I'm newer to Caroline County than most of the people, I believe, who've spoken this evening. So I work in the industry that deals with data centers and have spent a significant amount of time in them, around them. I used to live up in northern Virginia, in Loudoun and Fairfax Counties adjacent to them, and that is where they should stay. You know, my family moved to Caroline County a few years ago to be in a rural area. You know, we found a nice secluded house in, you know, zoned rural preservation. It's like twenty feet from being one of those dots of the, you know, houses in the buffer zone on the new pert on that map. And, you know, we moved there because rural preservation is listed in the, you know, the document says this is to preserve the rural character of Caroline County. The rural character is not what I think of when I think of a data center or, you know, any other large technical facility, whether it's a data center, whether it's, you know, the MCD in campus or some warehouse, factory. Those absolutely should be built in Caroline County. There is absolutely a, you know, a section of the county that has already been set aside as this is where we think they should go, and my understanding is that almost none have actually been built there. Like, I completely understand the need for more jobs and tax revenue for the county. It sounds like there are several square miles set aside for that that haven't been utilized yet. And it's true that planning these things takes time, and so, you know, it's not, you know, snap your fingers and construction starts, but let's use the space that has already been set aside before we go and start inviting industry into, you know, rural areas. Like, you know, part of that area is actively farmed, some of it is tree farms, some of it is also, you know, what in Virginia passes for old growth forests, several hundred years old, that would potentially be cut down for data centers. Yeah, you know, certainly we need, you know, tax revenue to improve the roads, the schools, all that, but we have opportunities for that in the existing pert and the industrial-zoned areas. We don't need to expand that, and when they are expanded, it should be done, you know, along 95. That's already built up. Nobody is going there wanting to get in the middle of nowhere. You know, moving here to a rural area and now having this going next door feels like...
So thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter?
Renisha Smith, Reedy Church. I just wanted to come up and just briefly say I agree with the gentleman said before me. I too moved down here from northern Virginia. I go to work in DC, and I come here to the quiet, to the country where I wanted to live. Northern Virginia is still overgrown, is disastrous. I don't know the last time you may have been in Prince William County, maybe Gainesville, Virginia. Used to be a nice, quiet town with one store, and now it's, it's full of, it's really bad, right? And my thought is, we bring data centers here, are we sectioning off land to say it's good to be used for that? You know, they're going to come in and they're going to take chunks more and chunks more and chunks more, and they're going to overrun the whole area. It happens very quickly, it's a blink of an eye. And I just, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know, I came down here to have the peace and the quiet, to go up and work in the noise and to come home in the peace and the quiet, to sit on my front porch when my dogs are playing in the yard, hearing the cicadas, you know, seeing the lightning bugs, actually seeing the stars, because you can barely see it anymore up there. Do we want to really get rid of that in Caroline County? And I spoke before in a meeting, and I brought up the fact of every time you come in Caroline County, it says, please help keep Caroline beautiful, please don't litter, or something of that nature. How are these data centers helping keep Caroline beautiful? Are these nothing but just big, giant pieces of litter?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the public hearing?
Good evening. Julia Yender, Mattaponei District. I don't live right next to this area, but my viewpoint also comes from, I work in the lovely world of corporate America, and we often see people ask for additional resources. And the best way to get denied is to have unfilled headcount on your team. Why would we give additional resources to a team who can't even fill the openings that they have? This is a viewpoint that you guys took with the police department a few years ago because it just makes sense. Why give more resources when we haven't used the one, filled all the openings that we already have? We have over 1,400 acres in the Pert today. It is not filled. It is mostly vacant. To my understanding, less than 50% of it has been developed. I think it's actually far lower than that. Why give additional resources when we haven't used what we already have? I would like to see development in the Pert. I would like to see tax revenue. I would like to see local jobs. I would like for my husband to not have to drive to Richmond to go to work. I would like to see things there. But why expand it? Why give us, why put additional land? Why use additional resources when we haven't used what we already have? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the public hearing? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the public hearing?
Joe Pagic again. I got you now. I was thinking that went up instead of down, so I apologize for that. I'll learn. Few things I wanted to comment on. Again, I want to get back to the existing Pert is 1,466 acres.
Restart him and tell us your name first, please.
Joe Pagic, P-A-G-I-C. Can I get my time back?
You restarted.
All right. Again, 100,000 square foot per building average. That's more than enough. The existing Pert is more than enough for now and the future. Going back to Culpeper, I stated before, they had 85-acre campus, and they had three facilities on it, totaling 1.4 million raw square feet. And it used 192 mil watts, which electric is a whole nother issue with it. We've lived there for 16 years. I can't begin to tell you how many times I've gotten run off the road trying to get from my house on McBryant Road out to 207. If you go Coleman Road, there's a big hump in the railroad, your trucks can't get around it. For MCD, they have a big load, they have to go out, ask the sheriff, they have to shut the road down, and they have to go the wrong direction in order to cross over to get up onto 95. I mean, to me, we've got a lot more infrastructure we need to develop, plus this existing area, before we go out and we expand it and do even more. One of the things is mentioned about the water is back into the earth. Well, the water's polluted once it goes through the system. If you research this a little bit, you'll find that the water has to be treated before it can be returned back into the ground. Otherwise, it has to go into a water treatment plant, another additional infrastructure and cost. And then we had talked about, it does not reduce the classification. No, it increases in rural conservation. Maybe not out on 207, we're talking about where it's already commercial or manufacturing, but where it's rural preservation, it sure does. It jacks it way up. So again, the J-Larke study is pending. Respectfully request the board supervisors file a recommendation to the planning commission and deny the comprehensive plan amendment to changes of Pert boundaries. Thank you for careful consideration of these facts.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello. Patty Daniels, Bowling Green District. I just wanted to, I was thinking about the cyclical nature of technology. So as I said, I've been an IT professional for over 15 years now, and I will say that it's very cyclical. There's a boom and bust to it. I don't know if you guys have used any modern AI technology, but it's really less than impressive, I think. You know, I know that's the hot thing right now. Big data was the hot thing a few years ago. We don't need, you know, it's, I just think something we need to be mindful of is the very distinct possibility that this is a bubble that will burst, right? That data centers may, they may seem like the hot thing right now, but there's a decent possibility that 10 years from now, people think AI is trash and don't need all quiet this level of processing. This technology, as it advances and gets more efficient too, you could end up with, we could end up with, you know, an overstock of data centers in this country that you end up with wasted space. So I think keeping in mind that technology evolves and that data centers, in my mind, are a little bit of a short-term investment versus something that's proven would be something else that I would consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the public hearing?
Hello. My name is Jennifer Torres of North Mattaponei District. I don't know, I know that the county, I read when you did the eminent domain of Corey Garrett's land, that the county has been in a deficit for water for 20 years. And I know you took the land probably to, on the promise of this data center giving money to reconstruct all of our water system and this and that. But if we're already in a deficit, I don't think we need to consider having a data system that uses $30 billion gallons of water, probably a day, I think I read, because that's going to just drain our rivers. It's going to affect our ecosystem. And, you know, the devil brings things in shiny glittery things that end up being bad for the community. Just wanted to let you add that comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding?
Good evening again. Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. I'll just keep this simple. You already have, you have two Pert designated areas, and I don't feel you should, you can change the comprehensive plan at the behest of every wealthy, out-of-town landowner. I know there's a landowner of a century farm in this area who are opposed, as well as numerous residents who cherish their homes and their rural beauty. When you look at that map, all you see in that zone are the three things that we really should be cherishing: that forest land, the farmland, and the wetlands. And I don't think it should be developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this? Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this? Hearing that, the public hearing, seeing no one else, the public hearing is now closed. Board members? Mr. Thomas?
Question. Mr. Hughes, would you come back for a second, please? One of the last slides, you had the graphics and whatnot. I'm interested in where... Okay, that was good, but I'll go back, back. Okay, that's good, I think. Where on this map is MCD?
This is the MCD complex right here.
Okay, I'm looking the other way, so I need to look this way. That's MCD. Okay, and the original concept for MCD was a technology campus, and that's represented by the red. Is that what we're saying or not?
No, the red represents an area that the county deemed was appropriate for Pert uses in that entire area. I think I have a slide.
Oh, you have one better?
So the yellow on this slide represents properties that MCD controls. So that's 569 acres within the existing Pert.
And some of the yellow is outside? I guess they could, they'd have to ask for change to go outside that area?
In two spaces. Here, it's beyond the existing boundary of the growth boundary and the existing Pert, and in here.
All right, that's what I wanted to know for now. Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that would like to, your way? Mr. Sealy?
Yeah. Can you, David, bring up my slides, please?
Hold on, Mr. Sealy. Did you share that with us before the meeting?
I just finished them this afternoon.
Mr. Sealy, here's the thing.
No, 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 Mr. Black.
No, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. We have talked, we...
I am doing my slides as a member of this board.
We have talked for a long time about presenting so everyone has the right information beforehand.
Everybody's got what's in the board.
No, 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 hold on, hold on. We say all the time that we're concerned, no, we don't have your PowerPoint. We didn't get a chance to look at your PowerPoint beforehand.
I didn't have any of the plots that were on the maps that were up here tonight either, but that wasn't provided to us, but we watched them tonight.
The board can make a decision whether he should do the PowerPoint, but I don't think unless it's provided for us, then if he has his PowerPoint...
I'm using the slides that were provided with those slides.
And, Mr. Sealy, unless you give it to us beforehand, every one of us had a PowerPoint up here, it would be all day.
No, we wouldn't. We would make this question and go a whole lot faster.
No, it would not make it go faster, it would make it go slower. We have an opportunity. We get upset all the time when staff, and you especially, get upset all the time when staff puts something on our table.
There was stuff on those slides tonight that we didn't have it in the board packet that we had to look at, okay? So yeah, I'm upset, so I have to make my own because they don't get provided.
Yep. You need to provide that to us beforehand so the whole board gets to look at it.
The board by law says I've got to provide anything for the public.
Then well, there's no board law says that we have to do a presentation either.
It doesn't say you can, so therefore I can.
If the board wants to let him go ahead, then we can vote on it. What does the board wish to do with this? Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. The thing that I'll say is that we discuss having all materials before a meeting. I don't have an issue with any materials being shared, but I think it should be shared prior to. We talked about our Thursday deadlines for anything to be discussed at the meeting. So from my point of view, if we're going to introduce any new information, then it should be given to all the board members prior to.
Mrs. Long?
I agree that would be a policy for us to adopt, but we have not adopted it yet. I know I did not get some apps until just yesterday. As long as this is not a lengthy...
Nope, not lengthy.
...patient, I have no issue with it.
Mr. Thomas?
I didn't have a problem with getting last-minute things before, and I think it was Mr. Sealy who said we shouldn't get them, so I'm just willing to go along with his original point.
So nay? Yes, two yeses?
Up to no.
You know, so we're two to two.
Then I'm going to take my time to go through every one of these, okay? Because I have them graphically laid out so that they wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to verbally go through this. So I would like to see the original map.
Go for it.
The original map that was given to us as Exhibit 1 in the board pack. Oh, no, Thursday. But there's, the map is so poor, there is no, there is no scale on this for the distance of anything. So I think that's the most, one of the most important things. So let's go to the opening eight and a half, or that eight and a half by 17 sheet.
Let's see.
Keep going. Right there. Okay, from, since nobody's going to be able to see, if you could point to 207, David, where the red line starts, the bend in the red line on the left, right there, and go all the way over to Carneal Lane, keep going to the right, go straight across, keep going to right there, to Carneal Lane. That is 2.2 miles, and we're not to the edge of the Pert yet. 2.2 miles. So let's start at the top right, the right there. We know that nobody can cross railroad tracks anymore without a bridge. Why would we even consider allowing a Pert to go across train tracks? That the only access to those would be from Panola Road, if you'll look at the very top is Panola Road. And that would be the future impacted area to get to that Pert. So why would we want to influence more growth on Panola Road by actually, by actually crossing the train tracks all the way along there with no access point because you can't just drive across tracks anymore? If you come down, if you go from the point, the little jog, David, come down, come down, come down, come down, right there, that purple point, come across about, come right there, that next point, go up. Right there. From there to the edge of the green, to the edge of the actual, what they're calling green space, it's actually probably water or some sort of wetlands. Why are we coming across with a Pert across all those wetlands? It can never be a Pert. But all of that through there, but it borders Panola Road, and it's within the half mile, and it borders properties on Panola Road that would then have like zoning if we allow that to happen. If we draw the line there, any property that borders that property can, Mr., I have just lost, Hughes, zoning, if your property adjoins zoning, you can apply for similar zoning, correct?
Sure.
Okay, that's my only question.
Sure.
But adjoining property does have preference. It doesn't mean you'll get it, but we're putting Panola Road with this, with access only being on the other side of it, actually being allowed to happen.
Mr. Sealy, just a point of clarification. This is not a rezoning, and so the zoning does not...
Oh, no, 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 no. But once we change, once we change the comp plan, rezoning is definitely looked upon favorably. We're not going to, we're not going to be able to deny it. This is, this is the line in the sand.
You can deny any case that you wish to deny.
I get it. I'm not going to get in the discussion with you, but we're here for a reason. This bottom corner down here with the two stars, that whole corner, is that a waterway? Whoops. Come over here to the right where the two stars are, that whole triangle that's in there. What is that, what is that blue-green line above those? Is that, is that a waterway or some sort of wetlands? So we're going to rezone a piece of property, again, that there's no access to in a Pert once again. And what are the two stars? And what's the, is the other one somebody else's house that's not here?
So prior to the planning commission meeting, we got a letter from those two property owners asking that their properties be included. They were not noticed as a part of the original advertisement, but at the planning commission, I just pointed out that those two property owners had submitted letters asking that their properties be included in the Pert.
And we'd know that how? As the board members, how would we know that looking at this?
You wouldn't.
Was that in the planning commission report? So the planning commission report was forwarded to us, those letters were forwarded to us as part of the planning commission report?
Yes, sir.
Did not see those lot numbers.
But the lady said that was her house. Did she write a letter to be included?
The prop, yes.
Where is she saying yes?
She did write a letter, yes.
Wave your hand if you're saying yes. So you want, she said she wanted, no, no, you can't come forward, ma'am. She said she wanted to be included, but then she just spoke. Ma'am, I really appreciate you helping me out, but we're not allowed to have a back-and-forth discussion after you did it. You've already answered that.
The road miles from 207 to Carneal Lane is three, is three miles. So we're going to, we're going to start, and that's not even to the edge of the Pert. That is only three quarters of the way across it, so it's probably, as the crow flies, almost four miles from 207. And we're going to impact roadways. And again, I'm going to go back to the dirt that we had at the YMCA. Where is all this dirt going to get trucked across as it has to be taken out of there? Because we can't leave all this dirt just sitting. It's causing problems now, and it's going to cause problems then. Because we can't leave all this dirt just sitting. It's causing problems now and it's going to cause problems then. The half a mile buffer, I'm not done yet, Mr. Black, he can smile, but the half mile buffer in color, in the, in the dark blue from the original red line, and then the half mile that comes out from the purple line, I mean, you're on Panola Road. You are affecting properties all along Panola Road, all the way down to the train tracks because you see they intersect over here in the corner. But you can't look at the, there's no way to look at the scale of this because we don't have that on this, on this map. All we can do is start to surmise based on the half mile lines that we've got. The very top corner between 207 and the red line. So are we really going to come all the way down 207 and make all of that a perp all the way to 207? I mean, does that really, does that really get us any place? Because the folks that live there did not realize they were in this, and I don't think some of them got letters. I had two phone calls from people that live in the county that own land there that had no idea that that was coming. Well, the blue and the black sort of run together. In the railroad tracks, we all can see, I had them done in yellow so you could see them, but you see the train track started Panola Road, come all the way along, keep going, come all the way across, and come all the way back down on that red line. It is completely, somebody's going to have to build a bridge to be able to get to this center in the future. And that's the same problem we had in Carmel Church Station. Three bridges needed to be built, and at that point in time, they were three to four million dollars. So who's going to build the bridge for the third line coming across this so that there's actually access to this site? And it's, it's enormous. It is, it is much, much bigger than anything we can fill. So, Mr. Hughes, do you know the total distance from 207 to the edge of the perp in miles?
That's approximately 3.7 miles.
Well, that's. You think it's 3.7. What do you think it is road miles?
That's what I would, I would, it's true.
Well, it's three, it's three miles to Carneal Lane, and there are no roads past there. That's why I couldn't give you a road mileage or aerial snap line.
I, I would say from, I would say it might be another half mile from Carneal to the edge of the perp because from the portion above the wetlands that you noted, across the railroad tracks from the edge of that boundary to Panola Road is six tenths of a mile, 3,300 and something odd feet.
But I think the enormity of this is something that we don't get to see with a map drawn like this. And we didn't get the parcels in our board packet at all. They don't exist. So we got to see that as a presentation tonight, but we didn't get that as part of the board packet along with the distances. So you can say we can't show stuff at the board meeting, but it was shown tonight and we didn't have it. So I'll take real exception to that.
Mr., uh, Mr. Underwood?
Just leave that map there. The blue area that, that to the right of the, the red line, what's, what's, no, to the right there. That, that area that you're asking to, for the expansion, what's the total acreage there?
16. It's about 1,400 and something odd acres there.
And if I'm correct, you're asking for, for that as well as the, the purple line on the left to be included.
That is correct, so.
That's correct. So that, so then.
It's about 200 acres between here and here.
Right.
And 1,400 and something in here. And this is comprised of like four parcels. This, there's one parcel in here, it's a thousand acres itself. And then there's two, a parcel here, a parcel here, and then 200 acre pieces in the middle.
Okay, so the four parcels in the blue, one of a thousand acres, correct?
Yes, sir.
Of the, of the owners of those four parcels, that area, that's what, there you go. So, so do you get the two, the triangle, the triangle, and the one that looks like this?
Yeah.
Oklahoma sideways?
Yes, that's a hundred and plus acres, that's a hundred plus acres, and these two combined are about 400 acres. And then this one piece here, which extends up kind of around the boundaries down through here, is about a thousand acres.
Right, okay. What are, what are the property owners saying there that own those parcels?
So this parcel owner is requested to be in the perp, this parcel owner has requested to be in a perp. These two parcels are currently under contract and we actually have a, these representatives will be at a TRC meeting next week.
Okay, so go to the left side now.
I'm sorry.
The long, the long.
Hughes, can you repeat that? Mr., Mr. Underwood, do you mind? Can you repeat that again on the parcels who wanted to be in those, in those who wanted to be in there?
These two here.
Yep.
And then this thousand acre piece.
And the big one?
Yes.
Okay.
These are all related. There's, these four parcel owners are related. Now, that doesn't mean that they all have, like.
Right. That did not want to be, so, okay.
Yeah, correct.
So that's like 80% of the perp.
Let's go to the left parcel now, Mr. Hughes. There.
Yes.
Yes, speak to me about that, that piece of property there.
So this area is, these parcels here is owned M1.
M1, right.
Right. This piece here is part of the flip old property, so it.
But we're not going there, we're not.
No, we're not going there, but I'm just making a point that
Yeah, I understand.
this piece here is a part of this piece, and these two pieces is a single piece. It's dissected by around 207 along here.
So we wouldn't be splitting, the parcel's already split by 207, so.
That is correct.
That would be the natural bound, boundary.
That is correct. That is correct.
Are there any parcels along the boundary that would be split?
Here. This piece here. Which is currently zone M1. And this is Coleman's Mill Road here.
Right.
There's a, there are houses here, like three houses along Coleman's Mill. Yes, yes.
Okay, right. I have another one question.
Mr. Hughes, for clarification, go back to the pink and blue. The purply blue in the center, wasn't that already an existing line?
Yeah, so the blue area represents the half mile boundary from the existing perp line. So half mile in all four directions from this red line.
So that's already in our books. That has already been there.
Yes, that is the current boundary.
All right, so what you, the, the big change then is the pink and the extension of the square and the zigzaggy thing to, to. And if we were to move on this, that would turn blue then because it would be an extension of the buffer?
Yes, so the, the half mile is from this line out to here. To there.
Okay, but that's the potential.
Correct.
That's, wouldn't be a current. All right, that's what I needed to, to clarify. So the blue is nothing new.
Right.
Could you go to your map and show me how much in the blue is non-developed and how much of it, I know where MC Dean is, how much space we have?
So this is the area over here, and so MC Dean is here. The two parcels that we have the pre-application on are here. The thousand acre piece is kind of in here, and then the triangular piece is here, and then there's a triangular piece right about in here. And so as you can see, most of it is in either timber or, as I noted, there, the cleared areas here represent 82 acres.
How much wetland?
There's, there's 300 acres of wetlands along the perimeter in these fingers here.
Out of the 1,700?
That's correct.
And that, that green, the light green at the top, were you just next to the railroad track? That's all wetland?
This is all wetlands, yes.
So, so Panola Road is up near the north area?
That is correct. Panola Road is six tenths of a mile from this boundary right here.
So I can't really get from Panola Road to this site because I can't cross those wetlands with a road?
Well, you can cross it, it would cost you a pretty significant amount of money.
You'd have to build a bridge to go across the wetlands.
A bridge, a con span, and then you'd have to mitigate the impact of the wetlands.
The only way to get to the northern part of that is to actually come from Panola Road. That map doesn't depict that correctly.
Yeah, there's a, there's a 549 acre farm between the edge of this boundary and Panola Road.
Coleman Farm.
I presume, yes, but it, it comes, it's kind of wraps around it this way. There is a, a road, matter of fact, I think it's right there, that extends down to Panola Road. So they, they do not have, uh, direct access. There's probably an easement, maybe an easement to gain. Because you can see there's some type of farming roads or timber roads in here. That's what these represent.
But none of those go across that green strip of wetland?
No.
Okay.
Show the map with Panola Road because the only way you can see how you can access that is to see the map with Panola Road on it because you can't, there, there's a, Panola Road is the only way to get to the northern part of that perp that crosses the railroad tracks. There is Panola Road, the only way across is at the very top and you come straight down. All of that is very, very drivable, but you've got to come, you've got to come to it from Panola Road. So we're going to put stress on that road for the upper part of that.
Yeah, but, but access to this larger piece is, is, is from dry bridge. I'm sorry. Oh, this is.
So, so theoretically, the, the part we were just talking about that's north of the wetlands, that, that part, if we took that part out and made it follow the lower part of the wetlands, yeah, like right around where, where David's pointing?
Hmm.
Would that have an impact?
It would only dissect the parcel. That's the only impact.
Well, why would you dissect a parcel? You can't use it anyway.
Yeah, well.
But you can't cross the train.
Didn't tell me it was going to dissect the parcel till after I asked the question, so.
I, I don't know why you'd go anywhere across on the other side of the train tracks because you can't use anything north of the tracks. You can't cross them with a road anymore. The railroad won't let you, and the only way we're going to be able to cross down here is with a bridge. But if you zone that, if that gets rezoned, it gets pressured by Panola Road.
It's not up to us to, to upgrade it. No, I'm saying upgrade.
So one of the options you have, if, if an applicant came in for a rezoning and that was included as a part of that, I mean, they could proffer, you know, that could be a conservation easement, they could proffer, you know, any number of things to prevent.
Usage.
Usage of that area, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? How can they use it anyway?
It's only a matter of money, Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Hughes, one more time, can you show us the parcels?
Sure.
With the triangle and all that? Okay, that's. Oh. So the big hundred and some acre parcel is what goes across the railroad tracks?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that makes a difference.
Mr., uh, did you, were you finished with your question, Miss Long?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Mr., uh, Thomas, do you have a question?
I believe I've interactively asked my question.
Okay, Mr. Forehand?
I'm just, just stuck on not, again, I don't like hacking that piece off, but it's kind of cut off.
I can't hear you, Mr. Ford.
Not, not a fan of dividing the parcel, but in, in this case, I'm, I'm a fan of dividing the parcel, just separated by the, by the wetland.
Good piece of the top.
Right.
That's top, yeah. Because I don't want it, I don't want it accessed off Panola.
I'm sorry. That would, that would be the only access. But like I said, in a, in a rezoning scenario, I mean, that could be, it, it could be proffered out that that portion couldn't be used for a day or so. And I do want to clarify, I, I misspoke earlier, that area is actually, this area here is actually 340 acres with 180 acres of wetlands, so.
So that could be proffered out so that, much like the Luckstone access, off Route One only type of thing?
Right.
Mr. Hughes, if I could, while they're looking at the maps, what we already have in the red and also in the blue, which is already established, there's, there's lots of land at the bottom. Is anybody working on those? Is anything going in on those?
You mean these here?
Down in there?
Yes, man, the owners of those properties are actively marketing those.
So those are already sort of filling up? Okay, that, that's what I wanted to know. They're not being marketed, are they?
They're being marketed, yes.
They're being marketed, but they're not under contract.
Yeah, I'm not going to have any outbursts from the audience. Not going to have any outbursts from the audience. You've had your time to speak. The board is sitting here asking questions. Thank you. Is there anyone else? How does the board want to, uh?
I'd like to see us table this until we get a better look at the rest of what's here because this is our first time to see this and to, to have to make a decision this evening just doesn't make any sense. We've had a number of public comments. And, and I think that it's, it's not in our best interest to make a snap decision tonight.
And, and I will say, I spoke to my, my representative on the planning commission, and she said one of the reasons they voted it down was they didn't feel like they had enough time to get a good hold and they wanted some more information. I would like to go out and see some of these properties and, and look a, a little bit more. But I do want to clarify that, that, that purply blue in the center that was on one of the maps, that has been an existing line. That is not a new section. What we're talking about is the pink overlay would be, would be new, so, um.
So, Miss, Miss Long.
Over the red line, the blue line and that pink would be future.
So, Miss, Miss Long, that, that's, I don't think you're understanding it correctly. Those lines only represent a half mile distance from the existing boundary, which is the blue and the pink. So what would be new in the perp area would be this bold line here.
Right.
So this, this only represents the distance from this red line here to here. And then this from here to here in the pink is the new half mile distance.
Okay, so the, the big blue circle is just a half mile marker on the edges from the red line?
That is correct.
Okay, I thought that was the old potential part.
No, ma'am. The, the, the existing perp is the red line.
All right, uh, how does, Mr., anyone else have any comments? Mister Thomas?
One thing, Mister Chairman, during, during the public comment, uh, somebody said that we denied the sheriff more positions because he had open positions. And this board, I've been on the board for a while, we have never, ever denied the sheriff any positions. As a matter of fact, last year, we asked the sheriff to hire extra people so we would be able to cover it. And the sheriff is back there. If, if I ever said we weren't going to give you a position, you can definitely jump up and down now, but I know that's not the case. So I just want to clear it up to make sure everybody in the audience understood we never turned the sheriff down.
Don't make it true.
Okay.
People say what they want, don't make it true.
Yep.
We have a chance to play.
All right, so how do we want to move forward with this?
I make a motion to table this for further review and work and study.
I'll second.
What's that? We meet again in two weeks? Do we want to bring this back up at our next meeting?
Is that what the motion was?
Yep. Motion to defer until, uh, our next meeting is, uh, twenty-seventh, right? Twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, yeah, twenty-fourth. All right, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to defer to the twenty-fourth. Do I have a second?
Nancy's second.
Nancy's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries. All right, we are, we are deferred until the, uh, twenty-fourth. All right, we will move ahead to, uh, agenda item number five, which is text amendment zero-one, uh, two thousand twenty-four, text amendment zero-two, two thousand twenty-four.
All right, good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board. These are three text amendments, all involve vehicle washes and are combined into one presentation, but will require three separate votes. Text amendment oh-one, two thousand twenty-four, and this amendment to add automated vehicle wash to the definitions in the zoning ordinance. An automated vehicle wash shall be defined as a tunnel structure with automated equipment that guides a vehicle through to receive a car wash and/or other services associated with cleaning the exterior and underbody of a vehicle. It may include employees for the drying and cleaning of interiors. The following standards shall apply to an automated vehicle wash. Metal exterior siding should not be allowed. The building must be constructed with brick, masonry, or other similar types of material, such as decorative precast concrete panels. Vacuum stations shall be placed in the front yard and each shall have a designated parking space. Structures shall be oriented such that the queuing of the car wash cannot impede ingress and egress to the property. And the site will be staffed at all times when in operation, when located in a PSC zoning district. Text two, oh-two, twenty, twenty-four will add automated vehicle wash as a special exception in the PSC district. Text oh-three, twenty-twenty-four will remove vehicle wash as a byright use in the B-one zoning district and add vehicle wash as a special exception use in the B-one zoning district. The definition for vehicle wash was a structure or portion thereof containing facilities for washing motor vehicles with registered, a registered gross weight of less than seventy-five-hundred pounds using production line automated or semi-automated methods for washing. The seventy-five-hundred-pound restriction is not to allow semi-trucks or large equipment, you know, equipment vehicle washes. Only automated vehicle washes will be permitted by a special exception in the, uh, PSC district. Any type of vehicle wash would be allowed by a special exception in the B-one district. And automated vehicle washes will not have to be staffed, uh, in the B-one district. So this concludes my presentation. I'd have any questions, and I would just follow up that, in response to Mister Thomas's request that, um, the vehicle washes not be staffed, have to be staffed by, for twenty-four hours outside of the PSC district, we added that language, uh, at the end of the definition, so that it is, you know, there's no prohibition there.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone have any questions before I go ahead and open the public hearing? Yep, uh, yep, so, all right. Anyone? All right, I'm going to go ahead now, since none of the board members have any questions. I'm going to go ahead and, uh, open the public hearing for text amendment zero-one, two thousand twenty-four, zero-two thousand twenty-four, and zero-three, two thousand twenty-four. Would anyone like to speak on these text amendments? Ask one more time. Does anyone like to speak on these text amendments? Hearing that no one would like to speak on these texts, I will close the public hearing. I would like the, uh, board, Mister, uh, Thomas, I believe this is your district, correct? Yeah, well, true, but I mean, it's, you know...
It's text amendment, so there's, there's no real district, but if you need a motion to approve text amendment zero-one, two thousand twenty-four, I will do so.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve text amendment zero-one, two thousand twenty-four. Any other comments, discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, motion carries. Uh, text amendment two thousand two, uh, two thousand twenty-four, amendment for zoning ordinance of Caroline County for planned unit development.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mister, um, I didn't hear you, Mister, uh, Forehand, but, um, text amendment oh-three, two thousand twenty-four, for the business repealing section two-point-two, two-three-three vehicle wash and replacing with section three-point-two-three vehicle wash. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Long, second by Mister Thomas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, um, text amendment, uh, oh-four, two thousand twenty-four, amendment of the zoning ordinance of Caroline to amend Article eight, parking and loading requirements, Miss...
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board. This is text amendment TXT oh-four, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, staff is bringing this forward this evening for a public hearing. And you should recall, this came for first reading at your August meeting. To briefly summarize, uh, the zoning ordinance currently requires the minimum size of a parking space to be nine by eighteen. Um, in today's standards, full-size trucks are approximately twenty feet. So as a, as a result, that causes them to overhang up to two feet into the travelway in commercial and residential developments. So in order to maintain sufficient travelway, um, for fire and rescue vehicles, staff has recommended increasing the minimum size of a parking space to nine by twenty. Um, in addition to the size of parking spaces, the zoning ordinance requires uh, that two-way roads and drives have a minimum width of twenty-two feet. Except in residential developments, they have to be twenty-six feet. And so this text amendment is increasing the width of two-way roads and drives in all developments to twenty-six feet. Uh, the Planning Commission held their public hearing on this text amendment at their July twenty-fifth meeting, and they recommended approval. There was a, uh, question or discussion at the, uh, first reading with regards to provisions for compact parking. Just wanted to make you aware that, uh, staff did evaluate that and draft some language to that effect, but after receiving some feedback and input from fire and rescue, there were some concerns about, uh, enforcement issues with compact parking. So we have maintained the same proposal to have all parking spaces be nine by twenty. So that concludes my presentation. I can attempt to answer questions you might have.
Does any of the board members have any questions? Yep, Mister Underwood?
Um, first question. I got a email about possible financial impact on developers. Would, would there be any financial impact? Well, I mean, the, the roadway typically that you're, that is built in development is standard, but based on V-DOT anyway, correct?
That's correct.
So are we moving beyond those, uh, regulations or guidelines, or is this falling within those, do you, or do you know?
I do not know, but I believe it is in line with V-DOT.
Okay.
So, Mister, no, we are indeed moving beyond those becau, in the name of public safety, because this is a public safety issue. So this is being driven by, uh, you know, public safety officials who
Right.
often run into issues with, with the driveouts, and then right now with the size of the parking spaces.
In the larger vehicles.
Larger vehicles overhanging into those driveouts. And so would there be a impact on development community? It may have to add a
Foot or two.
A foot or two of asphalt to a parking area, or maybe design their parking at angles, or there are a number of creative ways to design.
Negate any cost.
Would not have any significant impact.
I just, uh, it was mentioned in the, in the email, um, that, that I read, I think it was from Fredericksburg Alliance, uh...
It's such a, yeah.
Well, so I just wanted to ask that question. All right, thank you, Mister Hughes. Thank you, sir.
All right, um, does anyone on the board members have any question before I open the public hearing? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on text amendment oh-four, two thousand twenty-four.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chairman Black and the rest of the board. Uh, my name is Sean Miller. Uh, I'm the one who emailed you this evening. Uh, I'm the Government Affairs Director at the Fredericksburg Builders Association. Um, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our almost three hundred members, many of which, uh, work, live, or employ workers in Caroline County. I'm here to voice our opposition to text oh-four, two thousand twenty-four zoning ordinance amendment, which seeks to increase the minimum park space size and increase the minimum width of travelways to twenty-six feet. We believe these, uh, si, these increases will add significant costs to both developers and to, uh, consumers as they will raise housing costs. It is our understanding that no other counties in the surrounding area have similar, uh, parking space requirements. Um, so we find it a little strange that you want to increase them all of a sudden. Aside from parking spaces, or aside from costs, um, these increases will push buildings farther back into wetlands in critical slopes, which will cause engineering difficulties, and there will be less density overall. So we'll be forced to build smaller buildings, um, and less buildings altogether. This amendment would also force developers to increase the impervious area in their developments. Um, and this would force members to build additional and larger storm sewer drains and storm water management facilities, all at an additional cost. Um, we would like to request that the Board of Supervisors either deny the amendment or issue a deferment for up to one month, so that we at FABA and our Legislative Committee and Board of Directors can go over this information, um, and make a decision, uh, that's more informed. We would like, as I said, this would allow us to get some more accurate information, uh, for you on cost to consumers and to our members. We at FABA appreciate the board for their hard work on this issue, um, and for taking the time to hear our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any, uh, questions, Mister? Oh, yeah, uh, yes, that's, that's true. Does anyone else would like to speak regarding this matter? I will go ahead and close the public hearing then. Um, board members? Mister, um, Forehand?
No, no question. Uh, staff? Is a question for staff, yeah. So this is proposing an additional two feet per parking places and two feet for the thoroughfare?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're adding four feet?
Correct.
Well, if it's parking spots on both sides, so we're adding six feet? No. If it's a center, if it's a center aisle with parking spaces on both sides, I got two feet in this, on this parking spot, two feet in this parking spot, and then two extra feet down the middle?
The travel lane's twenty-six feet wide instead of twenty-four is how I read it.
Right, but the parking spaces have to be bigger now.
Parking spaces are separate from...
It depends on if the development is a residential versus a commercial development.
Well, in, in your position, the, the driveway goes right through the middle and they park on each side.
Well, they parallel park.
Yeah.
So that, that would, would that change?
No, they parallel park now.
Part, like street-side parking? So that would be, just the roadway would be two feet wider?
Correct.
Okay. But a, a, a parking lot for a business would change?
Currently, it would have to be a twenty-two fit, twenty-two width. Uh, so the proposal's increasing it to twenty-six, which would be four feet.
It's from twenty-two to twenty-six?
For the travelway.
And then the longer, longer parking spaces. So we're adding... So we're adding eight feet. If you have a center aisle and parking on both sides, we're adding eight feet of, of asphalt. Are, are we not adding two feet per parking space?
If parking were on both sides, it could be...
Parking from, on both sides, center aisle, parking on both sides, I got two feet, I got four feet down the middle, and then two more feet on the right. Parking's on both sides, straight-in parking.
You're not talking about a road, you're talking about in a parking lot?
Yes, in a park.
Okay, I thought you were, when you said traveling, I was thinking road, because this changes the road.
And, and a parking lot aisle.
Correct, got it.
It's a lot, it's a lot of asphalt, because every, every square foot, as we know, we have to add more stormwater. I, I hadn't never even thought about the stormwater issue. I, I understand the public safety issue. Let me mull that over.
Mister Thomas?
Yeah, I, um, was trying to do the math on it to fi, figure out how much it was, but I'm actually willing to, um, acquiesce to Mister Miller and, and give them a chance to study it a little more. I don't have a problem with that, but you have a problem with that?
Well, I was just going to make a statement about the, the stormwater management. So there are a number of ways that the stormwater management can be accounted for outside of the driveout and parking area, where there won't have to be an increase for, uh, the stormwater management facilities. Developers get credit for any green space for stormwater management that is on the site. So there, there are green strips, there are, uh, if there are parking islands or islands in the project, if those areas become, uh, green areas, all of those green spaces become credits for stormwater management. So there are any number of ways to account for that additional eight foot of asphalt without necessarily having a, a significant increase in costs for stormwater management. So I, I just don't want it to be perceived that somehow this eighth feet is going to significantly increase costs for a project, because there are no, any number of ways to receive stormwater credits to maintain the same size of ponds, so.
Chief, I see you sitting over there. How much, what's the average width or the widest point of your fire trucks going down a road? Into a subdivision?
Well, you have, you have a straight line width, which would be, you know, eight feet at the maximum, um, nine with mirrors. You have a turning radius. If the truck is turning, which is much, much more significant. Uh, if you're talking about the ladder truck, if the ladder truck is going to try to set up, that's eighteen feet. So I need clear span of eighteen feet. Where we're running into problems here, they're two separate things, right? Parking lots are one issue. Uh, we're building stuff that is being proposed to us. We can't get our apparatus in there if there's cars trying to come out, because the parking lots are either, the parking spaces are too small, vehicles overhang, or the travelway, it's one or the other, right? So I, I need one or the other. I need a bigger parking lot or I need a, a bigger parking space to accommodate that. Though, so they, they don't have to run together, but there needs to be some common sense management, and we're not seeing that on the plans that are being proposed. There are proposals like Ladysmith Village where we have a problem today. We can't get our apparatus in there. They continue to propose alleyways at sixteen feet wide, right, on some of these lots that are twenty feet wide. I have to get a ladder truck back there, and if I put the outriggers, I'm at eighteen feet, so the truck is going to sink in the dirt, right? So I can't use it. Those are very narrow. The second thing we have is people park on the street. They do it no matter what signage, road markings we put on there, and again, that impedes us. So making a, a larger roadway in those instances will help us, even if some... So, making a a larger roadway in those instances will help us even if somebody does illegally park on the street. And that's what we're trying to combat on plans review and in the actual world today, so. If possible, but I mean, again, it comes down to, if possible, absolutely, yeah. Best case scenario, yes, sir.
Chief, chief, do you have input on the site plan process?
I do, and that's, that's where this is coming from.
So, you can say, when, when a developer turns in a site plan, you can say, no, this won't work, right?
I can, but we don't have the authority, we don't have a hammer, we don't have a law rule for that to to go by. They're gonna go by whatever is the fire code or whatever VDOT's saying, not what's kind of common sense here. You know, I have a pickup truck, it's an extended cab, long bed, you know, it's, it's a long truck. I overhang the parking lots all the time, especially if I can't park it, right? That happens, so, I mean, I'm just being honest.
Yeah, I've been in a parking lot where they couldn't find the white lines, they could get in one, they got two.
And I'm big enough, you know.
We had an incident in the King George Walmart parking lot on a Friday afternoon, a guy fell out. And when the ambulance came, they couldn't make the turn to come up the aisle way to to even, they had to walk because there was no way to drive. So, when I saw this, that was the first thing I thought, because I couldn't believe that they could, I mean, it was, it was crowded, it was in November, and it was cold, and when the ambulance came to turn, they saw they couldn't turn, so they grabbed their stuff and ran up the 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 way, but, and all the big trucks, and I've got one extended cab, eight foot bed. I park at the end, and it's usually in two spaces, and it's still, y- you're just barely in two spaces because they're so short now. So, when an emergency vehicle comes and you're at the end of the lot, if you're not there, there, there's no, there's no way for them to turn.
Yeah.
I I get it.
Yeah, and with roadways, um, when someone is coming out of an area and we're trying to come in, it's that turning radius that we really need, and that's why the the additional width, so. Could it be gravel, could it be something else? A- absolutely, um, just curb to curb, we're stuck, so.
So, so, you want a hammer or a way to enforce it? But but is it a, I have to have twenty six feet, or if, you know, my development won't survive if it's twenty five feet or more?
Again, it's a combination, it's a combination of both, right? So, if if the parking spaces are larger and and they can accommodate vehicles and they're not encroaching in the driveline, I could go with a smaller driveline, sure.
Okay.
But does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying, this, this text amendment is an and a text amendment, not an either or text amendment.
And I don't think we could figure out how to do best, you know, a good judgment, you know, it's one of these two. But what we're seeing on plans review is very, they're trying to squeeze as many cars as they can in a spot. And again, in in some of the subdivisions, and I pick on, you know, Lady Smith Village, we've got some very, very narrow roadways and people don't fit in the driveways and, you know.
Well, well-earned criticism.
Yeah, so, and you know, Pendleton's no different, people, uh, Belmont, you, you know, we got parking problems galore there. So, uh, not only trucks, but residential cars as well, so.
And other stuff, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um, can we add language, Mr. Hughes, to the text amendment that would say one or the other? Okay, you're making a face before I even finish, what's the story?
I, 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 Mr. Thomas, I'm with you, I think we should defer this, let everybody think about, I understand your question.
Was this the one I didn't ask yet, or?
No, the one you're getting ready to ask, and you make it one or the other or both. And and I don't know that anybody's prepared to answer that.
Well, I think the one or the other would be giving the authority of the one or the other to public safety during the, during the site plan review process.
What if he needs both?
Then he gets both, but what if he needs, if he needs longer, longer parking spaces and a regular driveway? Because we do, I mean, we do have to consider, and Mr. Miller, I almost believe you, and it's gonna cost more, almost, but we should consider something in the building process.
So, you're looking for an and or?
I would, I wouldn't think an and or is the best win-win situation.
Can we legally do that? And the other thing I'm thinking are school buses, you know, they're, they're not skinny either. And cars are getting longer and safety first, so it would be nice if in the approval plan, in the approval section, we had a chance to say, or our chief had a chance to say, I think we need because of this layout this wide.
The schools have already accounted for that, taken their buses out of those small areas and kept them on Library Boulevard.
Right.
But the fire and rescue didn't have that luxury.
I can't, yeah, my house is on fire, you can't say, well, I can't, can't get there. Walk along, I'm gonna make a, oh. I was gonna make a motion that that we we defer this till our uh, first meeting in October.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Mr. Seale, we will defer to the first week in October. Any other discussion?
One other, one other, can we look at an and or statement i- in, on top of this, we've done the public hearing? Is that, can we still do that, Mr. McKenzie, by adding that language? Since the public hearing didn't, I don't know how much of a change that would be.
Yeah, so we'll have to look at how, you know, what we're doing is amending the text of the zoning ordinance. And right now, it's pretty brief, and it just has two paragraphs that address parking space width. And so, to to figure out, I I think the bigger issue is not necessarily just putting in an and or, but it's figuring out how to implement that discretion that you're talking about, about when to make it and and when to make it or. Um, and so, we'll have to look at that, and then, once we know how we could implement that, we'll know how far we are from the original notice and whether we can pick that up or start a new one.
So, a month was a good thing to get the time.
We'll take the time, yeah.
Mr. Mr. Hughes, or Mr. McKenzie, state, state if you would, i- is this, is the current? Are the current things codified in like the I B, International Building Code, or where is that, the current?
Oh, yeah.
How is that currently identified?
So, it's currently identified in our, in our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
But your zoning ordinance gets it from the building.
Is it from the I B C that's gonna be a Dillon Rule issue, or are we clean for that?
No, y- you have the authority to draft your parking regulations any way you you wish.
Okay.
So, my only concern is, I I get a little hesitant when we have these and or situations and these discretionary provisions in a zoning ordinance, because when it comes down to site plan, I can tell you, the development committee or someone is always going to take the least path of resistance and the the lesser of the two. So, I mean, there are a number of ways we can address this and create, we were trying to do this without creating a lot of additional regulation, but there are a number of things that we can do to, I think, appease everyone without an and or situation and and create a, a very definite path forward for the development community. Because in in practice, what will happen is if we have these undefined and discretionary terms in our zoning ordinance, we will get a lot of calls and we will spend a lot of time with engineers trying to figure out how to put together site plans. And so, that is one of the, the beauties of having very defined regulations within the code. Now, we can certainly build in options like you've talked about, but I think it runs the potential of expanding that parking section much more than what we have now. So, I think from past experience, I've been through this, and we ended up with a three-page parking regulation trying to appease every situation that arises. So, it, it's not as simple as just an and or.
I I kind of disagree with you, because I think you're looking for a black and white issue where you can say yes or no, and the world is full of gray. And in this case, if I can't get my fire truck in there without making the road bigger, sir, developer, you have to make the road bigger. Your job is yes, no, right now. It fits the regulation, it doesn't fit the regulation. I'm sorry, but we're gonna add another layer to your job to say, maybe we can do this differently. I know you can handle it, you can do it.
Mr. Thomas, we we can certainly do it. I'm, I'm trying to make it more appeased and better for the development community as well as staff. I'm, I'm not trying to make it more difficult.
You can handle it, thank you.
All right, so we, we, do we, do we vote to defer already? Okay.
I don't think we voted.
I don't think we did. We didn't, all right, so I need a motion to.
It was a motion, Floyd made the motion, I made the second.
All right, uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's deferred to the October meeting. All right, um, the proposed amendments to the, we're gonna go into unfinished business. Proposed amendments to the solid waste convenience site standard operating procedures manual. Mr. Shebal?
I pulled that, and Mr. Shebal gave us the analysis. So, for now, I think we're okay. I would like to look at this in a year again because I'm listening to the attendants tell me, and I did like the idea if the sheriff's office would do it as one day, on a Saturday afternoon on a nice day, do some checks of people's driver's licenses coming in to the different sites and look at where they're from. Because I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I've been seeing trailers of stuff.
I, Jeff, we can, we can fix this in November or December when they put out the tax bills by giving them a little sticker that says Caroline. Every, every car gets a sticker.
Yeah, right, yeah, and it, yes.
I mean, it's.
When we were charging for it, and it was.
We changed Nancy because the state said change, because all of those new cars had their electronics right where our tags were. That's why we changed. Now, they're all over on the left, we can have a small sticker that says Caroline Dump Privileges, whatever.
Mr. Thomas, um, that's correct, it can be done, um, there is a cost to that. Um, currently, uh, all of our bills are processed through a third party and mailed directly to the residents. Now, the treasurer's offices physically have to stuff everyone with each one and then confirm who has that. So, there is a touch of an employee for every single one of those stickers to go into an envelope and then to mail those separately. So, it's just staff time, it can be done, but there is a cost of doing that.
Well, I'm, I'm sure of that, but we did that before when we had, when we had some information, we wanted to get out to all the citizens, we put it in a tax bill, right?
Yes, sir, it can be done.
So, I mean, is the cost of stuffing ten thousand envelopes more than the cost of disposing of ten thousand tons of trash that didn't come from here?
Yeah, so, we, we, ten thousand tons is our annual amount, um, we're estimating.
That's just a number I picked out of that sky.
Um, we were estimating about thirteen thousand dollars um, is what we probably are spending that we can't really justify by a percentage increase in population.
It's not gonna cost you thirteen thousand dollars to stuff those envelopes.
If, so, let me ask you this question, if if you, like, as Mr. Seale was saying, something like, someone comes in and they're blatantly not from Caroline, they're doing, is there a fine for that, or is there, is there any civil penalty or any sort of penalty whatsoever?
No, we just tell them they can't dump there. So, we'll stop them right there. One of the things you've got is once, once they're there at the site, and they, they're there and you identify it, one of the things that we think is the worst thing you can do is send them down the road, because then they're gonna dump it somewhere on the side of the road because it's another issue.
Well, and I'm willing to wait and and watch this. I think we'd look at this again in eight months and see where, if the tonnage is going up. And I I've just noticed it, I've had folks that I know shouldn't have been there, and they're, they're looking around as they're throwing stuff, trying to get out of there as fast as they can. I wanted to see what the trash numbers really looked like, so.
The tonnage is gonna go up, though, because.
Well, it's, it's gonna go up, but if it goes up precipitously, you know, instead of four percent, it goes up twelve percent, then we got a different problem. But I I just think this is something we need to monitor, and I don't remember if I had other comments on the manual. For the most part, I think it was.
You said you did not, it was, really, you were holding it up because you wanted to know more about the outside trash, possibly.
You know Spotsylvania does it, right? Spotsylvania does it, they've got a trash sticker.
Yes, they charge for it, and they've got a full-time staff member that that's all they do, every time new car is an issuance, so.
Okay, so, we will just leave this, is that the consensus of the board, just believe it as it is for the time being?
All right, make a decision before November.
Yeah, well.
The end of November.
Mr. Seale, come back in eight months.
I, I was gonna come back before the next budget cycle, this is, we're kind of, this sort of answers this budget cycle answer for me.
Yeah.
But next budget cycle, I'd like to look at it again.
However, I will say if we decide we want to go to some type of a decal or sticker, again, takes time to get those printed up too, so we don't want to wait too late.
I think that's why he was saying wait eight months, because it would give us plenty of time to.
Right, exactly, because it would give us time to do all that. Because we wouldn't go, the tax bills would go out, I mean, we could do it in December or June. During May, rather.
Yeah, it's gotta be before June.
Right.
We'll revisit this in the, in the spring then, or early, okay. So, can we just put that on the calendar, revisit what month would be a good?
Do you still need to approve the new manual?
Yes, please.
I make a motion, we approve the solid waste convenience site standard operating procedures manual.
I'll second, or Mr. Underwood second. Uh, any discussion on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, carries, uh, proposed addition to the Lady Smith Fire Station.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before you tonight, you have a request pursuant to the drug explain, excuse me, jug chain, supply chain act. Uh, that's a lot to say. We looked at a number of sites, both at Lady Smith Fire and Lady Smith Rescue, to be able to distribute the medications that we need to. We've been able to find places in Bowling Green and at Carmel Church to do that without uh, minimal cost. But at those areas, those stations are are pretty much maxed out, there's not room for that. Uh, so, we, we sat down with Lady Smith Fire and came up with two options. One was to do something upstairs uh, on the second floor, which really, at the end of the day, wasn't really a great spending of of county tax dollars. On the second thing was to put an addition off the back of the building uh, to move the turnout gear out of the apparatus bay, the air compressor, which provides breathing air out of the bay, and to provide room for the drugs. We would look to manage that internally, uh, using local contractors to put that addition on, you do have a plan of that addition on. That is, that is the best option, I think, for what we need to do over there. If you'd like, I can bring you back a, the one that does something on the second floor. But again, I, we don't get much bang for the buck on that addition, so.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
Yeah, have you gotten any response from the VACO letter that went out?
No, there was a response uh, that came back to Southwest Virginia EMS Council, not for the VACO letter. Um, and a senator, I believe, wrote that in response, and they said there may be some option in the future.
Yeah.
Um, but as I mentioned in January, I don't think that option's going to exist for Schedule Two drugs, right? Your, your bigger drugs, your fentanyl, your morphine, those kind of things. Um, and so, because of that, I I don't, doesn't matter if they allow certain transactions for Schedule Six drugs, we're still gonna be, have to be licensed and be able to provide everything ourselves. So, um, the other thing I will just point out, what's driving this is the pharmacists at the hospitals, right? They're, they're the ones that ultimately have to make the decision whether they're gonna follow the DEA rules or not. So, it's, it's going to be difficult to say to those folks, we want to see you, you know, kind of stretch the law a little bit. Um, Mary Washington is moving ahead faster than the deadline, uh, so they'll be in the early November timeframe. So, we'll wait and see, but right now, we're moving forward with, it, it's, it's gonna happen.
In turn, why can't?
Hundred, hundred and ten.
Eight hundred and ten, but you have a hundred from.
Yeah, but he's got in his, yeah, budget.
I, I, I don't, I don't have any of that.
In the reserve, yeah, I read it was in the reserves, but.
Oh, in the public safety reserve?
Yeah, yes.
That, that I don't know, that I don't have on my part, so.
But so, really, you're asking for additional ten from the general fund?
Yes, sir.
To make a hundred and ten.
If you guys have, okay, they say they got.
I'd like to make a motion, we give the additional ten added to the hundred.
All right, so, so they can have their building, I'll second it.
I did already.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, second. All right, any, any discussion on the motion? Is it a? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The, the, can I answer his question, sir?
Yeah.
Uh, the medication part will be conditioned with a hundred and ten volt mini split, the other part will just be heated off of the bay. Yeah.
All right, number ten, can we get an answer to this tonight, please? Um, number ten, further discussion on the increase in the Caroline County Library hours. I really want to appreciate, uh, I do appreciate you for spending a lot of time on this, because this has, I think, been in front of us several times.
This is the third time, so.
So, okay, we'll.
Third time's the charm. Um, since our last presentation, the library conducted a user survey and collected more hourly visit data to add to what we previously presented. Um, and we received two hundred and twenty-five responses to the survey and collected data over a roughly two-month period in June and July. So, this is a repeat from previous presentations, I just wanted to show it to y'all again because it includes all of twenty-three, twenty-four now. So, you can see, except for Lady Smith, everybody is still half, roughly, or less than half of what they were pre-pandemic. Um, so, I'm just going straight into the. So I'm just going straight into the schedule here. Using the survey responses and hourly visit totals, this is what the new schedule that we are proposing as library staff. I'm going to go through the data in upcoming slides, but, you know, just wanted to get this out here first. Our main goals were to shape hours based on what county residents and other library patrons said they wanted. And then two, to shift hours where they weren't being used to keep costs down. So this new schedule adds between three and nine hours. Saturdays at Bowling Green and Lady Smith and evenings at Dawn and Lady Smith. We, even with shifting, we'd have some gaps in having two staff members on duty at all times. So that is why we are asking for an additional part-time position for the Dawn branch. Yes, sir.
Mrs. Upshaw, what, what we have in our packet, unless I'm on the wrong page? I'm on the wrong page? Oh, because I have the one that says $33,000.
That one was, the 33 is for the entire fiscal year. The 28 is just the remainder of the, this fiscal year, the current fiscal year, since we wouldn't be starting until September, October. That's where 28 comes from.
So it costs us 28,000 for a quarter, no, three quarters.
Yeah, three quarters of the year.
And that's what you think is the best thing?
I think so, yes.
Let's, let's motion to do that. You ready to do that? I'm going to make a motion to go along with the suggested hours of operation that Mrs. Upshaw has presented us.
Second.
Discussion.
All right.
And I'm not going to change hours, I'm not going to change the amount. However, I do want the board to know that I am on the schedule to bring this up at the Port Rolltown Council this month, the end of this month, to see what hours they want because they had said something about having some weekend hours also. There's always a conflict with that hall on election day. So we'll change the hours, but I would like to have the ability to bring you back the hours that they want after they talk.
I would be glad to come to that meeting too, so.
All right, thank you. But other than that, I will prove this.
Motion sent in the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, number 11.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your perseverance. All right, further discussion of social services telework policy.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We prepared a pretty lengthy memo and I don't want to have to read all the way through it with information on what surrounding jurisdictions are doing. And we still do have some that are 100% remote. We're not, we put in, you know, what our policy is and, and what, what wasn't written and what I would, would like to emphasize would be that there would always be leadership in the building. So if the director or assistant director are not there, then all three of the division supervisors would be present, benefits, services and administration. And so that there would always, it wouldn't just be services there supervising the administration and the benefits. It would always be their supervisors there if the assistant or the director is not there and that would be part of policy. There's, it's currently how they try to run, but it's not really formalized. But we do believe that it would be detrimental to the organization to mandate, you know, everybody return fully, given the opportunity to remote work in the social service industry. Questions?
We've seen this several times. I think we're, I mean, it's just a matter of, I think, opinion of voting. I don't know if there's any additional information that board members have that they would like to, I guess we'll take a motion either way.
Any complaint that the office was unstaffed?
Not that it's come to me. I think, you know, Mrs. Long's had some occasionally about phone not being answered, but that can happen even if you have staff. You can have somebody, had somebody working with the counter, somebody else on the phone, somebody at line. There, there can be times when you can't get to a phone call, but I haven't heard of anybody coming to me going into the building that didn't get seen by somebody.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I just want to make the point, I adamantly disagree.
So there's, I'll take a motion one way or another. For staff's recommendation is to keep the policy in place. Mr. Underwood has.
With our, with our proposed changes for, in my recommendation.
Yes, okay, with.
Mr. Chair, I knew that we accept the telework policy as presented by Mr. Cully.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Long, a second by Mr. Forehand. Any discussion?
I just, you know, the next time I get a complaint that somebody's not being seen or won't, you have to sit in the front office and wait for 20 minutes for somebody to show up at the front desk. And I had several phone calls after the last discussion about this.
I would need times and place, I mean, dates and stuff to be able to research that.
Okay. Is there, is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, we have a divided house. Mr. Forehand.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas, aye. Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Sealy?
Nay.
Mr. Underwood? And I vote aye, so the motion carries four to two. All right, we are on to the number 12. Continue discussion of possible changes to chapter 77 and 124 of the Caroline County to defer violations of property maintenance code and zoning ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
We introduced this topic at your meeting on July 16th and are coming back this evening to discuss draft ordinances that would implement civil penalties to address property maintenance and zoning violations. We understood some of the key concerns during the previous discussion included escalating fines, violations in agricultural zoning and budget implications of utilizing on-call contractors to abate violations. So I'll need a few moments to go through the draft ordinances to show you what's been proposed.
Mr. Chairman, one of the questions a couple of us had was what were the violations and what ones were we not able to address? And how many of those were there and how many violations were we able to address? And I think for me to be able to, to, to look at the policy, I have to understand what we've encountered that we couldn't solve and what we've encountered that we have solved and how long some of that took and how much time. I mean, you send in three or four letters to somebody before they solve it or is one letter being suffi, I just, there's not enough for me to decide what the ordinance should or shouldn't say because I don't know enough about the violations and what we've sent folks and how long it takes for those to transpire, to either be resolved or the next letter, or does it never get resolved? How many? I, I just, I can't read this without having that to make a determination of what we need to do.
We do have a graphic. We have tried to put together some data for you to give you a graphic that shows an idea of where violations are occurring in the county and what type they are.
Was that in the board packet?
It was not. So this is information we tried to put together from the last five years, based on the records we have available, just to give you an idea of how many violations and what type of violations there have been. So as you can see, based on this, this graphic, there had been a total of 121 violations. Eight of those have been repeat offenses. And the most common occurrence or most common violation that we seem to have involves trash and debris. And I'll just note on the map that some of the, the dots that you see, it may be actually more in that area because of the, of the, they're condensed based on how many violations were in that particular area. So there could be more dots than what you may see.
May I ask a question about the dots? Is, I, I know for instance, in the Mattapanai District, inoperable vehicles, you've got 11, but I think five or six of those are the same location. So are they by location or by offender?
My understanding is it's by location or tax parcel.
By tax parcel. So you're saying there's 11 tax parcels there?
That's, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay, well, I know of one guy that we had to go by twice, so, okay. Thank you.
This still doesn't help me determine if these got resolved, they didn't get resolved, how long they took to be resolved. I can't read an ordinance and I understand what the violations are. We've all had them and I don't know how long it takes to get some of them resolved or if they ever get resolved. I mean, I've got some that have been, that have been hanging out for three or four years that aren't resolved. So we've sent a letter after a letter and after a while, the letter just is meaningless. So I need more data to even look at an ordinance.
So based on the records that we have, the majority of the violations on that screen have been resolved. There are eight outstanding.
Do we want to defer or what do we want to do?
I think we made some points at the last board meeting about, I think Mr. Thomas and I both made some points about what we needed data-wise to actually help decide this ordinance. And it's probably a spreadsheet with dates and letters and parcels and districts and whether it resolved or not resolved. I mean, there's a couple of ways to approach this, but I'm not sure I can tell somebody without looking at all this.
And maybe how it was resolved because the county has in, in the past, I, I know for a fact because I was there, but they've torn down buildings that, that were, you know, abandoned, dilapidated, whatever. And that cost was borne by the county, but then they put a lien on the property. So did, did I, did the county ever get that money back is what we need to know as part of this?
We don't even know how many of those there were.
I know two, at least in, in my district, I know two. But, but the other part is the tall, tall grass is a common one. If you don't get the grass cut, then we, the county hires somebody to cut the grass, same process, they build the actual land on it. How many times have we gotten that money back? And that's what I'm, I think that, that was the question we were asking. That's what I was asking.
Well, I was asking for how many times we've sent letters and they've done nothing and how many of those did we have?
And the other thing was the same guy who does things in my district and things in your district. That's the repeat offender all of.
Correct.
That's another story, but.
But we don't have any of that. I, I can't decide on an ordinance without knowing.
So, Mr. Chair, some of that data we're not going to have because of inadequate record keeping over the past. It, it would be extremely difficult for us to go back and determine, a five-year look back and determine when a letter was sent, what was the timeframe between that person responding and that, that issue being resolved? Because the record keeping is simply just not there.
How far back can you go?
I'm saying the further we go back.
I'm not saying go back to ancient history, but I'm, I, I, I've got some that are outstanding that have never been resolved that we're still sending letters to.
And I, and I would venture to say those are probably, they maybe have that RP zoning where under the property maintenance code, that there's a state code exemption for those. And so this ordinance is designed to try to address those issues as well as with a subsequent ordinance amendment to capture the RP zoning. Because one of the, the provisions of the state code, it exempts any property that is zoned agriculture, where agriculture uses are permitted or there is agriculture going on. There's a very specific carve-out in the state code. Now, we have, we've found a way with Chris's group to amend our ordinance again to, and put a section into the ordinance to address those in those with that RP zoning. So to, to take it out of the property maintenance code and put it in the zoning ordinance. So right now your property maintenance is in the property maintenance code where the state code says you can't address those ag zone parcels. What we have found is that there's, we can add a provision in the zoning code and then go at those items through the zoning ordinance versus the property maintenance code. Now, what that will do is it still puts us back in that position that we're in now of sending those letters and having to, to adjudicate it through that method, whereas through the property maintenance code, we can do the civil penalties. Now, so I'm just saying, I understand what you're asking to do and I would love if we had that data, but right now we just don't have.
But you've got some amount of data.
And, and that's what we're providing you. We are providing you the data.
But how many of these have been, how many of these have been closed and how many of these had five letters or four letters or?
Based on.
I'm going to create an ordinance and I've been in this ordinance dance before we pass an ordinance and two months later it's back and it's not right. And, and then we've made a whole lot of people mad and we can't get out of the circle. So before I get in it, I want to understand what I'm doing.
Well, I, I understand and that was our purpose tonight was to try to walk through and, and show you what we're trying to do. We have provided you based on the data that we have, the information that we can provide. So of those 121 violations over the last five years, there are eight repeat offenses and there are eight outstanding in that time period. I don't think we have the data to go back and look at the, when specific letters were sent and when persons responded. That, that data collection was just not being done in that manner.
Those eight, are they long-term?
I'm sorry?
They're still outstanding.
Yeah, I would say over a five-year period, they're long-term, yeah.
So you're, I'm saying, do you have an idea of how long those violators have been violated?
We could probably go back and pinpoint those specifically.
I think that's what we want to look at. You've sent a notice, nothing's being done. How many notices have you sent? How many are still on the book for a lengthy period of time?
Right, but I'm saying, we can pinpoint those eight, but what I heard Mr. Sealy was saying was he wanted us to go back and do that for the entire five-year period and run a.
No, I didn't say fi, I said, how far? A year, 18 months? I mean, we've got somebody that sends these letters. We've got to be able to track when the letter was sent, who sent it, what, who it went to. I, I mean, we're not just mailing a letter and nobody knows where it went or when it went out, do we? Or the addresses? I mean, everybody's got a computer on their desk.
Mrs. Sealy, you are correct. I can just tell you that the level of record keeping that we have at this point, that's what, that's, it is what we have. So.
See, that's a, see, see, this. No, I'm just, I, what I was going to say is I, my concern is we're going to keep on dealing with this problem of these repeat offenders if we don't start doing civil penalties. And I, and I think that putting liens on homes, you know, I was telling, talking to Mr. Thomas, you put a lien on a home and they sell it 20 years later. You know, I mean, I mean, you're, you're getting it back and who, who knows? I, I do feel like we need to move forward with some sort of ordinance because you're dealing with the same people over and over again, just because you live out in a rural preservation area, you know, it's wonderful, but some people don't want to have a, a neighbor with, with trash and so forth all over, even if you're not in a, in a residential neighborhood. You know, a lot of the HOAs do their own cleanup and so forth, but we do need, we, we had a hard time with the, the grass cutting, but I, I feel like we need something because there are certain people that are having, starting to have like junkyards. And if I'm a neighbor of theirs and I live out in a rural preservation, I understand you, there's more relaxed, more relaxed out there, but at the same time, I, I wouldn't, there's still people who live out there on 20 acres of land or whatever, they, they don't want to see that.
So the only thing I would ask tonight is if you'd allow us to walk through the ordinance and let us show you what we put together and then we would try to get the data that you asked. But I think what we've crafted for you addresses the issues that you guys have addressed. And so it addresses the escalating fines that you asked for. It addresses an opportunity to deal with the RP zone property. It addresses the issue that you said of the tall grass. So it's all there. I, I think the question that we still are yet to answer are the specifics on, you know, when a letter was sent, who it was sent to, when they responded and, and that type of information. And I, for the eight that are outstanding, I'm almost certain that we can get that information. For the other, you know, 100 plus those up there that go back five years, that information may not be available. I'm just telling you, that is the level of record keeping that we have at this point. And so we have amended our processes and we have set processes in place so that we can capture that information now, but I'm just saying. But I'm just saying, we have, this is about the best level of data that we are able to provide.
So do we want to move as the, as the board, do we want to move ahead with the first reading? I mean, for a public hearing?
I would think so.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not willing to take this as a first reading go to public hearing. That's my opinion.
Are there any comments on the document that we provided? I mean, have you, do you have any thoughts on what we've given you?
Right. Okay. So how about this? So how about this? Because I think the bunch of us up there are tired. I think why don't we do is why don't we defer it? And put it at the beginning of a board meeting, you know, like on new business, Mr. Parton. We'll put at the beginning of something so we can, we can take care of this fairly early is to walk through this, is two weeks enough or do we want to defer to October?
I think it depends what the board agenda looks like. I mean, only you're going to know that.
Yeah. So, okay, we'll either do it depending on the, yeah, we'll either do it and depending on how busy the second one in October, September is, September or October? Yep. All right. Do we need a motion to defer or just? No, we're just kind of consensus. All right. The next one, thank you. Number, I guess we are to new business, number 13, proposed amendments to fiscal year 2023-24 school budget.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before you have from CCPS, an adjustment to their fiscal year 2324 budget. It's, there are two sets of increases. One is an increase to their federal revenues and that's due to the large increase in the number of meals served for fiscal year 24. That amount is 750,00191 and that would be added to the school cafeteria fund. The additional piece to that is $100,000. And that is for supply chain assistance. And that is to help with the supply chain disruptions and economic uncertainty in the school meals program. So that as well would increase the school cafeteria fund. The second increase is for 163,92551 and that is made up of two pieces. for an increase for additional state revenue for the one time state construction funds. The estimated amount was 1.5 million. However, the end of the year, the delta, there was an increase of the additional 151. And then the second piece, part B of that would be an additional 12,374 for state revenue for per pupil allocation. In your executive summary, I did make an error where it says note four and five. It should be note three and four. Whereas the state construction and the facility funds have been utilized to pay for projects such as CHS restroom renovations, CMS fire alarm update and the CMS HVAC portion and ADA updates at the CHS stadium. There are no local funds being requested. This is only a budgetary authority request for both the food service fund and the facility category of the school operating fund. There was a memo that was prepared by Mrs. Stevens and that was attached as well. And this concludes the report.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I do. Go ahead, Nancy.
Oh, I have one question. What is the, you know, a supply chain assistance, school food authorities? I'm just curious. I have no idea what that means. Help me out.
Certainly, that was additional funding that was received with the supply chain in receipt and getting food to the schools. The feds provided the additional because of the shortage of getting their food there and the cost increase of the supply getting to the schools. We also have noted in there the increase of the meals. We have been significantly increasing the amount of meals that we're able to provide to the students. Of course, they are all free to the students. It is funded with the federal program. And there is a little bit of state money that is funded into the program, but the majority of that money is or majority of the program is federal funds. There are no local funds towards that food service program. We did increase the budget for fiscal year 25 based on these actual figures that we're seeing come in. So we have adjusted up to 3.9 million for the food service program in 25 that you all have already adopted.
So the school food authorities are state, so state authority?
We run through the federal, through the USDA, but there is the program through the state that is monitored by BDOE also.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Sealy? Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, Steven, the 163 for construction, that was part of federal also?
That was actually state.
That's what.
Construction grant. We received over 2 million the prior year. We spent about 400,000 of it and brought in 1.6 into the new year.
And that was for the HVAC and something else as well, right?
We actually did several projects with that 2 million. It was ADA compliance at CHS, the fire alarm. A part of the HVAC is funded in there to spend those funds down in the CHS restrooms that I know Mr. Black was advocating for in those renovations in that school.
Why would we not reduce the debt service by 163 cents?
These were state funds that came in on construction funds. So they were to be spent this fiscal year.
Oh, for this fiscal year?
Yeah, fiscal year 24. Yes, sir.
Aren't we in fiscal year 25 right now?
We are. This is finishing up the budget authority appropriations for the fiscal year 24 based on the actual revenues that were received.
But the books are closed, correct?
We are not fully closed or audited at this time.
Yeah, they don't go back to September, October, right? You go back in October.
The auditors will be back in October.
So could we put these funds in a separate account and use them for debt service for the HVAC since the school year's over?
These funds are actually already expended. I did total out the funding that we had available to the 100% and it went towards the CH, the CMS HVAC project. They had to be spent by June 30th.
Because you're just bringing it to us now and it's September.
Correct. We had the board approve it in August, the school board approved it in August, and I've come to your next meeting. It is budget authority only. It's not asking for any revenue. We carried the revenue into the fiscal year.
They carried the revenue. Okay, I need a, what do we want to do?
I'm not sure where we are.
You and me?
It's you, I mean, Dr. Calverick gave me a great explanation of the the free meals program, which I appreciate. But what, what we're saying is you already got this money from the federal government? You're getting this money from the federal government for last year?
The construction budget is a two year commitment. We had two years to spend this funding of which we have spent down to zero. I want to share to make sure there's clarity of understanding. Both the county and the schools have a number of functions that are required at the end of a fiscal year to close down accounts. This is simply a logistical matter. We need budget authority to close down appropriately for the auditors. We are not asking for new revenue. We've spent the money appropriately. This is a non-issue. So the number of questions that are coming forward, I appreciate. But this is a simple matter that your department does on a very regular basis. So I think our board approved it in August. We're here at the first meeting. I don't believe your budget is closed either. Is that correct?
No, no, but really, Dr. Calverick, the question is this 850 for the food service was spent before June 30th?
The food, that is correct, but the food service.
Stop, stop. So you spent the 850 before June 30th? And now you're getting a reimbursement from the federal government for that 850? Which is why you're applying it now to close out your books?
I actually already have the reimbursement for that 850 as well as the expenditure. I'm asking for the budget authority to be able to cover that revenue.
Match up in the budget. That's all I wanted to clear up. I wanted to make sure because what was happening down there is they thought you got another 850 yesterday. And you can't have 850 in 25 and apply it to 24. The reimbursement part is what we talked about on the phone. Because so many people get meals for free, you get money from the federal government. Right? Basically, as simple as it could be. We're good.
Okay.
All right. Can I get a, can I get a motion?
Right?
Yes.
No, I'm asking then. I buy, I buy cheeseburgers in May. The federal government says, here's your money for your cheeseburger. Maybe in June. However, that worked out. Now we need to say their budget actually went up $850,000. So the auditor can say, where was that money? That's all. You already spent the money? You already got it?
Mr. Chairman, may I add? So if they do not have the budget authority, if we don't add the money to the expenditure, they will, when we present the audit, it will appear as if they're over budget. So this is something that we have to do so that we increase that expenditure. They will have gotten the money either way, if you approve this or not.
Yeah, should have been on. All right. Can I get a motion? I'll second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, we are on to, we've already done agenda. Yeah, 16, we did, yes. So we were at 16. We didn't do the hiring of course. We need to do 16 though. We need to do 16 regular before we do 16B. All right, so 16.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the current year's budget has an approved full-time HR generalist position with funding available effective January 1st. And we're trying to save some money in doing that, but since then, adding the position has become even more critical. We've got a lot going on in HR. We don't have enough employees and in my opinion, haven't for a while. So I'm asking to expedite this up to two months. I'm not sure we can, that's realistic that we can get someone in by November 1st, but I'd like the opportunity to take a shot at that. And so I'm asking for another 11,000 and change to authorize buffing up the hiring date from January 1st to November 1st potentially.
I will say that when this summer, when Mrs. Long and I went around to talk to the different departments, both administration and the lady in charge of HR said this was, that they were behind on a lot of stuff. So this seemed to be one of the.
Can you define a lot of stuff? I mean, that's, that's, you guys are using some broad terms. They're saying they're behind in a lot of stuff. What stuff? So they have another, is it hiring practice? Is it getting out?
A lot of like, yeah, like there was, there was concerns that employees were coming to as far as like, for example, if you're coming to like fix your insurance or something like that, that they were behind on because they were dealing with other, she's dealing with payroll, she's dealing with other issues. So it was, yes, and some medical issues. So Mrs. Long was there as well. So.
Medical issues for the employee?
Yes. For like, yes, like claim, for claim, like for filing for claims for insurance for employees and stuff.
Let's see. Here's an example. I had a bill at one time and I wasn't sure what it was saying or if it was right. I call Pam. I said, I got this from our insurance company. Is this correct? What do I do?
I call the insurance company.
Oh, I go, do I need to fill out this form or do I not? And she says, yes, you need to come and fill out a new form. I mean, that takes, takes time. They have to go through.
You need to fill out, she needs to fill it out.
I need to go get the form from her to fill it out because I was like.
If you form, you fill it out. I'm like, all right, so I go and I file and I.
Time it by.
I just like to hear something that's time consuming. We have to file something that takes us. The term a lot of stuff and you were very broad and general and that really does nothing for me. That's just me. Maybe I'm. I just never went to anybody and said, we got, she's got a lot of stuff to do.
Mr. Parton, can you give some, I mean, besides the examples that I gave, can you give some, some of the job descriptions and why?
It's keeping up with all the health insurance things, all the, all the.
For all the employees, which how many?
New employees, all, all the data, all the hiring processes, all of that. And if you look at other localities our size, they have two, three, four, sometimes five, full-time HR employees. And so I know from, from that and from, just from experience that, you know, it's a lot to keep up with. And in my opinion, we don't have enough staff to handle the work.
Some probably come to work and work at a desk.
So do we have, so thank you, Mr. Parton. Do we have a, how would the board like to handle this? I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right. We are 16B now, which is the, yes, which was Mr. Thomas.
I don't approve, Mr. Chairman. I said nay.
Okay.
The nay vote.
All right. So we had a division in the House. It was five to one. Okay, 16B, we are, we can move forward now with the discussion on a possible.
Mr. Chairman, I, as I said during the opening board comments, there, there are, well, there's several misunderstandings, but there are, there is a perception that, that all data centers will use a lot of water. And after conversations with staff, county attorney, Mr. Shebal, and Mr. Wilson, it appears that all of the data center projects the county has, except for Matamid, the first one, are closed loop water systems. But they'll, they'll use about the amount of water that seven houses would use and they'll return the tax revenue that about 500 houses will use at a minimum. But the danger is that we could approve data centers somewhere else where we don't have to provide water. And they would basically just sit as an unused space. Could have been, could have been a distribution center, could have been another business. But it would be dead space and we'd lose it. So I think wherever we have a data center project outside of the Pert region, which was by right in M1, we should make that a special exception so we have more management and more control over where they go. I'd like the rest of you know that they'll, they'll come to us and say, this is our plan and we want to be here, but we can kind of help direct them to other areas if that's the case. So, and I know the county attorney would agree with me. If the board wishes, we could pass an emergency ordinance today that would be good for, what, 60 days? That said, if, if we wanted to make it by special exception, we could do that. That's kind of how emergency ordinances work, but I'll listen to your.
Yeah, so we can do emergency ordinances for some things, but, but on an amendment to the zoning ordinance, you typically need to publish that in the newspaper. So I would have concerns about the enforcement of that. But if you, if you direct it, it could certainly be expedited, but that would need to go planning commission and to the board.
Question, I'm sorry.
That's the concern I had, I wanted to bring you.
My, my take on not, not restricting it just to the Pert. And I was, I was, I voted for making them to buy right use before we were, had such the interest that we've, we have. And my concern is that if we're going to have data centers, and I've said this publicly, I want them to be. I want them to be not visible, not like Ashburn, where they're on a five-acre parcel or a 10-acre parcel, that they're, that they're secluded, they're buffered, they're back away from people. And we have a fair number of legacy, when I say legacy, M1-zoned parcels that were, that have been M1 for 40 years, for whenever the zoning ordinance came, came forth, and the owner chose that it'll be M1. And some of those parcels are inside of the Pert, and some of them are smaller, smaller parcels that technically someone could purchase and put a data center that doesn't have the, that doesn't fit the vision that I think that we all want, that we've all been kind of going down this path, that they're going to be in campuses, they'll be, they'll have a ring of trees around them, they'll be buffered nicely, they won't, you won't hear them, you won't see them. That's my idea of how they, how they should be here, not on a smaller parcel where there's not enough trees possible to, to cover up, you know, you know, 60-foot-tall building. So, that, so that's my, that's my reasoning that has, and it was actually, it's been suggested by folks, and I agree.
Question. Mrs. Ee. And this is for the attorney. If we approved M1 zoning with the ability, with, and they have the ability currently to do a data center, can we now change that zoning, even though they've already, it's already passed and they're under that? Can we now take that away? Because my understanding is we cannot.
You can, you cannot take, you do not have vested rights in the zoning ordinance generally. So, if you have an M1 piece of property, but you have no current use of that property as a data center, you don't have the right to prohibit us from changing the zoning ordinance. But if you have a, applications in and you are, you know, beginning your use of the property as a data center, then you would be a non-conforming use if we were to change the zone.
But my understanding is if they're M1, they could put a data center without any other zoning ordinance, without any other zoning taken place.
Correct. So, the question there is, are you actively using the property as a data center? And that would, I think, include the preliminary work towards, you know, beginning construction, things like that, because you have vested rights in your use of the property. So, that, that's a non-conforming use. So, if I have an M1 piece of property and I'm using it as a data center, and again, I don't think that is limited just to you have the building there, but you're working on your applications and you're, you're, you're in the process of construction of your building, then you may have a non-conforming rights to that use. But otherwise, you have no vested rights in the zoning ordinance and going to be amended by the board at any time.
Yeah, because, because you can't, you can't be grandfathered if you haven't done anything.
Correct. So, so if you, so to, to take a different analogy, if you have an M1 piece of property and, and you, you know, you had the idea that one day I want to operate, you know, a warehouse on the property, but you've not done that yet. Right now, it's timberland, then, then the county could amend the M1 ordinance and take that out and take warehousing out and make it special exception. And whenever you decide you want to build that warehouse, you have to apply for a special exception.
But if you have an application in for that warehouse now, even though we changed the zoning, you would be grandfathered.
Yes, if you can, if you can make a plausible argument that you are in the, in the process of, of making use of that property for that use, warehouse, data center, then you could claim non-conforming rights. That's, that's the question, is do you have the ability to claim non-conforming rights under that provision of the county's ordinance?
So, when, when somebody applies for M1 zoning and they check the boxes that they're not going to do, and they're given the right to do whatever they don't check?
So, that's, 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 that's in a conditional zoning, if you're, if you're rezoning it and you proffer out uses. So, you say, I want to, you know, we've, we've had that before, but you say, I'm proffering out as part of my rezoning application, these certain intensive uses, right? To try to get whatever you're, so, say, say you want to rezone so you can operate a warehouse, and you say, but I'm not going to have a sand and gravel mine, I'm not going to have smelting, I don't know, things that people don't want. You proffer those out, and in your conditional zoning, in the proffers, you have, your M1 zoning isn't everyone else's M1 zoning, it's the M1 zoning subject to the proffers that you made, which include proffering out certain conditions.
So, can they, with that zoning, can they do a warehouse or a data center because they've already got, they've got approval for M1? And they, they, they didn't proffer that out?
So, the proffering out is, is separate and distinct from existing active use and non-conforming use. So, there's, so when you proffer something out, you say, I will never be able to do this. I've, I've personally, artificially, personally restricted the zoning ordinance and made it more narrow on my piece of property. But then the next question is, okay, you've proffered out a handful of uses, can't ever do those. The next question from a zoning perspective is, what are you actively doing on the property? Right?
No, what can you actively do?
No, no, to answer your question about whether or not we can amend the zoning ordinance, the next question becomes, what are you actively doing on the property? And if you aren't actively doing the use that you're, we're considering amending, you don't have the ability to claim that as a non-conforming use. So, so if, if you've got it rezoned to do a data center, and you brought the, brought the rezoning before the board and said, I want to do a data center, right? And I'm proffering out all these other uses. Okay, so that's the piece of property you have, hypothetical piece of property. And then, and then they say, okay, I want to do one of my, one of those uses that I proffered out. Easy answer, no, you can't. You proffered that out. Next question, board wants to come in and say, let's make data centers special exception uses in the M1 district. And that property owner would then have to be able to say, either, I am in the process of starting my data center, therefore, I'm a non-conforming use, and I get to keep doing it by right, or if they can't make that showing, they're going to be subject to the amended ordinance, and they're going to have to apply for a special exception permit.
Plus, this, plus this protects everybody, the county and the citizens more, because I don't know where all the M1 property is in the county.
Oh, no.
I don't think anybody else does.
And, but that's the question we've asked over and over.
But, but, but that's the thing, though. If, if somebody is at the Milford Industrial Park, going to put a data center there, we'd have no idea until it popped up.
Well, one thing to add that Mr. Hughes just reminded me to say was, as things stand right now, if you're M1 and you have by right data center use, you are still subject to the Pert standards, because we already made that change. So, you still have to do all the Pert standards, even though you're by right, as it stands. But those aren't, those setbacks aren't as big as I think Mr. Forehand was discussing.
Still, I don't know where you are, though.
Right, and you, and you wouldn't find out about it until they go to pull a permit to start construction.
Well, until one of the citizens calls and said, did you know about this?
Well, until you go to a Dominion Power site where they're bringing transmission lines in and you find the site, and nobody recognizes it.
Well, this is, this is a way to make, one, make sure to, to actually reinforce to the people that are asking about it, that we're going to make sure we control our water sources, because we could make data centers that use potable water, special exception. You know, we could do that, which, which does the same thing, but I think this helps us, because we can only put them where we want, and most of the ones we see now are closed-loop. Well, we approved two.
But they were, yeah. Well, well, yeah, they haven't, Madam Ee. All right, so, do we want to have an ordinance, staff work on an ordinance for that?
Yes.
Yeah, like, so, all right, so, let's, let's have, just direct staff to, to work on an ordinance that, in which it's a special exception involved, an M1 for data centers.
So, if I could just ask one clarification, I mean, I think the ordinance, the amendment to the ordinance to take it from by right to special exception, that's pretty easy. Probably do that from my phone, just delete it and move it. Do you want language about the potable and reuse water and, and redefining data centers on, as different types, or do you just want that use changed right now?
You told us, and I'm putting you on the spot.
That's fine, that's why I'm standing here.
And I'm getting, I'm winding up here. No, you, you told us that the county is not responsible for providing water to a business that locates in the county, right?
Correct. So, we looked at that issue for you, and the, the county has the discretion to determine whether it has the ability to provide someone with water. So, you, so someone can't hook up to the county system and, and use a huge portion of its capacity, or, or require the county to, to build new infrastructure in order to hook someone up to the system. So, when, when an applicant comes along, and this is why we see the water supply agreements and the incentive agreements for the infrastructure, the county is not obligated to build a new pipeline to connect you, or, or a new treatment facility to, to give you, you know, potable water. Let's say hypothetically, you found a spot that has a pipe going in and a pipe going out, but you're going to need millions of gallons a day, and the county utility department can say, look, we don't have that capacity to give you right now. So, we cannot hook you up to the system under the current circumstances. And they would have the discretion to say, no. Now, if, if, if a residential home is built and it's ready to be connected to the county system, not only does, you know, the county would generally have the obligation to do it, because if it's within a proximity to the county system, our water code says you have to connect. But there are, like you said earlier, Mr. Thomas, there are, there are lots of varying degrees and shades of gray. And when you get into these big, big projects, generally, they're going to require some additional construction and some additional capacity concerns. And if those concerns aren't addressed from the county standpoint, the county doesn't have to deliver service.
But, but we can eliminate a major negative of, of a particular industry by saying, you know, or restating, it's not the county's responsibility to hook you up to our water system.
Right. We would need to be able to, you know, the system has to be able to, a cut. The applicant needs to provide what needs to be provided to ensure that the system can accommodate it, not the other way around.
Right. And then there's the other case, if it's hundreds of acres and they're using the amount of, the amount of water of seven houses, that's a totally different scenario.
It's, it's, it's easier for the system to accommodate it, so that this county might be, we can accommodate this as is, or applicant, you need to do these minor things in order to be accommodated.
I'm good.
So, so it's, is it, it's just the amendment from by right to special exception?
But I think we need to add the water as special exception for any large business.
Right. You can require that. You can require that in a special exception process, correct?
To, yeah. Joy's in the back and speakers, but I'm pretty sure four-inch meter is the most we have a fee for, and anything larger than that has to be negotiated with the board. So, if somebody comes in and needs a lot of water, y'all have got to agree and negotiate what that availability fee is going to even be. In four inches? I think it's what you had told me back.
I thought it was six, but...
I thought it was six also, because we've done six.
But I think he looked it up, but I think it's negotiated.
I mean, four or six, what, what we're talking about is going to be bigger than six anyhow.
What's I'm talking about? So, that's, the board, that, they got to come to us and go, and we'd have to determine to where are we going to get that from, how are we going to serve that, and what, what you're going to pay for.
All right, so, the direction is to come forward with an ordinance. When, when would that, we look, what are we looking for? Next.
Isn't there, is there one, is there anything in progress right now?
I, I will have to look at that, but yeah, I mean, I think you'd be conservative, if anything's earlier than that.
Yeah, so, there, there are, there, the two M1 properties at the intersection of Bull Church and 639, the owners of those properties are conducting TIA's and doing stuff to bring forth site plans for those two sites. We've had pre-application meetings with them, and so they have hired engineers, are doing a TIA, we've had scoping meetings, so, yes.
Do they have to come to us?
No. So, they're in one.
So, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Thomas, did you hear this? What does that, what does that mean, you know those people? I don't care if you know who they are or not.
I'm aware of what he's talking about.
But what I'm saying is, they just told us that we could, we could stop it, but we can't, because they've already, I don't understand the game. So, explain the game to me, Mr. McKenzie.
Okay, and I, you know, I, I want to avoid getting into any, too detailed in an analysis here without really sitting down and looking at the particulars, but the, but the game is, is there a, a use of the property current that would establish non-conforming rights under our zoning ordinance? And if, if, if you, in my opinion, the conservative approach is, if you are underway with your applications and your studies to use the property as a data center, the most conservative approach is to say, that's, that's using the property, and if we, it changed the zoning ordinance, you can be non-conforming.
But there are, so, no. So, are they grandfathered in because they're already in process?
Yes.
So, we have no say over that?
Well, no, they're subject to the, the, the Pert standards under the existing language of the ordinance, but beyond that, they're by right.
So, we can't say anything about those two?
Well, I don't know, what do you mean?
They don't have to come back to us.
No.
Because you just told me that they'd have to, with site plan, they'd have to come for approval because they were non-conforming, because they had M1 zoning that, that, that fit in. Now, wait, 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 he just, I asked that question specifically for a reason.
I don't think that's what I said. But I, I'm happy to talk to you about this and, you know, try to sit down and drill into it, but, I mean, I...
But no, but they don't have to submit a site plan to us, because they've got, they've got zoning.
They need to do a site plan for construction.
But, but it doesn't come to the, it doesn't come to us.
No, no. No, yeah, I mean, if, if they're a non-con, or right now, yes, because, because we don't even, haven't even adopted this hypothetical change to the ordinance. So, yeah, right now, your zoning ordinance says that data centers are by right in the M1 district, subject to the Pert standards.
So, anything that's in progress, we can't do anything about? Because I was under the impression, we were getting ready to do something about what was coming, but we're really not.
Not?
We're not doing anything about those.
Pretty clear that...
No, 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 you, if I didn't understand it, you weren't clear enough. I was not clear enough, and I, you and I read many, many things together before, so you know that...
Then maybe, maybe you and I need to put our heads together and make sure that, that we can...
No, I want it to be clear to everybody that's watching, that there's nothing we can do if something is in progress, because there was this, this insinuation, we could do something, but we can't.
I did not mean to insinuate anything. What I tried to articulate was how non-conforming uses work under the county zoning ordinance.
Not, but when I asked you if they were, if, you said if they weren't in progress, and I wasn't aware how much progress was already done, right? And, and they don't have a shovel in the ground, and I don't know of a site plan.
And that's, you know, I, I cannot tell you on, we have to look at specific cases to give you a specific answer, but, but the conservative approach is, any amount of progress towards the use, the conservative approach would be to treat that as a non-conforming use.
So, everybody who's breathing a sigh of relief just isn't anymore.
I, I, I have no idea what everyone's doing.
Say again?
Does, yeah. Yes, all right, so, let's, let's, let's move on with... Yes.
Do you want that to come back for our first reading, or just go to the planning commission?
Go.
You can go right to the planning commission.
Go right to the planning commission.
If it's just the text amendment change?
Yeah, yeah.
From, from, from by right to special exception?
Yeah, we're just saying special exceptions, so I expect the planning commission.
I need a...
Point of clarification, do you still want them to be subject to the Pert standards as a special exception?
Yes, yes. All right, I need a motion to go in a closed session. All right, she, yeah, well, she's got her...
I move that this board convene in a closed.
Mrs. Long, sorry, do you want to do closing comments before or after closed?
Let's do them before.
We can do closing board comments. Mr. Forehand, closing board comments.
Oh, and.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, Mrs. Long.
Just thank you to all the staff for sticking with us tonight. Appreciate it.
Mr. Sealy.
Yeah, I have a closing board comment. I'd like Mr. McKenzie to tell me how I lose my First Amendment rights on a public hearing with view graphs that were said not to be given to the rest of the board when there were plenty shown that weren't, and I want an opinion on why that wasn't a violation of my First Amendment rights of speech as a board member, as an elected official sitting here for my district. And I'd like that to come out in writing to the board.
I, I will look at that, but I will have to say that our firm represents the board.
I understand, and I'm a board member.
Right. I can give you, I can look at the issue from the position of the board, but to the extent you have individual concerns about your individual rights.
You can send it to the whole board, it doesn't have to come to me.
No, I can't opine on your individual rights. So if you have a, if you have an individual claim that your constitutional rights were violated, that would be adverse to the board and the board action, and I don't think I can advise you on that. But I will look at the issue from the perspective of the board.
Mr. Underwood.
Just remember that State Fair starts in a couple of weeks, and I would like everybody to attend and have a great time.
Yeah, Mr. Forehand.
BNS today is September 10th. It was 21 years ago today that 246 people went to sleep in preparation for their morning flights. 2,606 people went to sleep in preparation for work in the morning. 343 firefighters went to sleep in preparation for their morning shift. 60 police officers went to sleep in prefer, in preparation for their morning patrol. Eight paramedics went to sleep in preparation for their morning shift. It was the last day that fathers hugged their children, husbands kissed their wives, girlfriends hugged and kissed their boyfriends. None of them saw past 10:00 AM on September 11th, 2001. Just please remember that and keep tomorrow in your thoughts. Thank you.
You know, I flew into Dulles the day before.
Okay. All right.
Excuse me, can I ask?
Yes.
Instead of making a statement, Sheriff, is there a 9/11 program tomorrow? Are we having anything at the flag? Are we doing, is anybody doing anything of remembrance or anything? No, I just wanted to let people know that there was something locally going on.
Fort Walker. What time?
Fort Walker.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock at Fort Walker.
Stage number eight.
Oh, we don't, we don't do anything over here anymore?
I will not be there because I have a, a meeting with the people from Fort Walker tomorrow, so I can't be at two places at one time, but thank you.
All right. Mr. Colley, I have none. I, I will not opine right now.
Okay. In that case, Mr. Chair, I move that this board.
On your, on your calendar, we have a retirement reception on the 16th for the Registered Academy Bay. Our next board meeting is the 24th. This Thursday, the sheriff wanted me to remind you to, I think it's Fish Fry, the Ruetan, Ruetan Fish Fly at the, at the ballpark.
Ball Field.
At the ball, at Little League Ball Field. State Fair has been mentioned a couple of times. Bless you. Our next meeting in October is on the 8th. October kind of busy. The 14th is a holiday for Columbus. The 19th is Harvest Festival on Saturday, and the Frog Level Festival on the 26th. So a couple of festivals in October. So that, just those few things, I just want to get in the sheriff's Fish Fry reminder too. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I need the motion to go in a closed session now.
Third time's the charm. I move that this board convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the consultation with legal counsel, litigation exceptions of Section 2.2, 3711, A7 and 8 of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney and discussion with the staff regarding policies and restrictions on the use of county-owned property, as well as updates on pending litigation involving the county, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the board's litigating posture, and the personnel exception of Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss personnel matters relating to employee performance reviews.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, I have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. We are actually in closed session. Have a good night, everybody. All those in favor say aye. We are actually in closed session. Have a good night, everybody.